Good evening and welcome to the 35th meeting of fiscal year 2024 for the Milton Planning Board. I would like to now call the meeting to order. We can begin by introducing ourselves and the staff.
Jim Davis, member.
Maggie Oldfield, member.
Sean Fahey, member.
Cheryl Tagaya, secretary.
And Meredith Hall, serving as chair. And now for our staff on Zoom, we have Tim.
Tim Zerwinski, Director of Planning and Community Development.
You're muted. Okay, there. Good. And Cheyenne?
Cheyenne Fraser, Assistant Director of Planning and Community Development.
Thank you. And Julia?
Julia, get in quick.
Great. Thank you. Our first administrative item is the approval of our minutes. We have three sets of minutes from April 29th, May 6th, and May 9th. Has everyone had a chance to review those?
Yes.
April 29th, yes. May 6th and May 9th.
So I'm fine with the 29th. I'm wondering if I could add something to the 6th.
Okay.
So, under the reorganization of the planning board, after the first sentence, I would like to add a sentence that says it was also discussed that having consistency of leadership, particularly during this time, is very important as we are continuing to work on the same projects we were working on last year.
Is there an issue with adding that?
I'm fine with that.
Do you need that to be written, or did you get that?
Oh, I'll just leave it.
Okay, okay. Great. So with that, can I have a motion to approve April 29th, May 6th, as amended, and the minutes from May 9th?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, or all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Next, we have our upcoming regular scheduled meetings for June 27th and July 11th. So those will be the next meetings to be held. And I thank everyone for accommodating the change of schedule so we could all be present this evening. So appreciate that. And now, Tim, Director of Planning and Community Development, update.
Thank you, Meredith. One kind of, I guess, overlapping issue relative to next meeting dates. I had emailed the board about this. I don't know if I heard from everybody, so we might as well just figure it out while we're all here. The Select Board is having an executive session with Town Council and our special counsel regarding the MBTA community's suit that the Attorney General has. The options that were provided to us were either June 18th or June 20th in the morning. I asked the town administrator if we could pin down a time-ish, and he said preferably 10:00. So if we can, almost everyone has gotten back to me as of shortly before this meeting. But while we're all here, maybe we can pin that down and I can get that to the town administrator and get that on the schedule.
Great.
So I can do either day?
Okay. Cheryl?
I'm out of the country next week, so either day, I can't commit to knowing that I'll be free at that time. I just had a question, though, Tim, because normally you can watch a tape of a meeting, but that's executive session, there's no tape. Can I be briefed on what was said at the meeting by you or someone upon my return, so that I at least understand or know what the content of that meeting was?
I will find out for you. Usually lips are sealed.
Right.
But I'll talk to the town administrator and town council about that, and we'll see if we can make something happen there.
Otherwise, I'd like to understand if there is a reason that it can't be the following week at some point. I return on the 25th, so is there some urgency to it? Because I would like to at least learn what's said there, and, you know, whether it's after or during.
So I just have a question. Because it's a Zoom meeting, is it, could we record the Zoom meeting, or is still that's not allowed?
That's another good question. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll ask. And one way or the other, we'll have an answer, which will be helpful for the future. So I'll get back on that.
Okay. Does anyone else have a conflict with those dates next week?
I had told Tim earlier, I'm good for both of those. Yeah.
I'm good for both, too, but earlier in the day would probably be better for me.
10:00 AM, they mentioned.
Yeah, even earlier.
Earlier than 10:00 would be nice, but I'm okay.
Same. I feel the same way.
Eight or nine.
So I'll, we should pick the 18th or the 20th.
The Select Board was fine with both dates as well.
With either. If everyone is good with either one, then that's the feedback I'll bring back. And then if nine is good, I'll make that suggestion, but otherwise 10:00.
Well, just so we have a firm answer, could we say the 18th at 9:00 works for the planning board?
Yes.
Would that be easier for you, Tim? That's the day and time we'd be good for?
Mm-hmm.
And if they push to 10:00 and we have no choice, we'll go to 10:00?
Okay. I will bring that back. So we'll pin the 18th at 9:00.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Tim?
And another thing, just kind of relative to scheduling, but also, you know, just kind of planning for how we want to kind of go about things. And I don't think we need to kind of come up with anything today, but maybe kind of be thinking about it for perhaps the next meeting is, you know, when MAPC should be back on East Milton with the rezoning. We've done another kind of publicity blast around the survey, you know, via social media, town website. It was on Milton Scene. We were at the Chamber of Commerce the other day, talking to the business owners. So hopefully that kind of shakes, you know, shakes the tree a little bit more on survey responses. But, you know, Josh did provide a sort of draft, kind of skeleton of zoning language, which the board may want to chew on a little bit, but also kind of moving on into the next phase of, you know, discussing design guidelines and kind of getting a procedure for that going. So I think, you know, just kind of keep that in back of mind as we sort of plan, you know, the next couple of meetings and kind of think about, you know, how over the summer we want to structure, you know, our discussions with them. And, you know, just, again, just start to think about that. You know, we've got until November with MAPC. So that was just something I had to debrief with Josh Fiala the other day. You know, he appreciated all the feedback that he got at the last meeting. And, you know, just kind of wanted to put it on your radar that, you know, we'll want to kind of think of a schedule and a procedure for the discussion of design guidelines. One thing that he did say, you know, relative to the scope of work that MAPC has, and kind of the, you know, division between, you know, the zoning product and the design guidelines product, and as it relates to kind of a public forum, is he didn't think there was much to be gained by additional public forums on the zoning language itself. That attention and kind of resources would probably be better served focusing on the design guidelines where we do, you know, need more feedback from folks. That's something we haven't engaged very much on. Whereas the actual zoning language, you know, we've met twice with the public, several times with the planning board, have other inputs. That, you know, that's a sort of a product that is more kind of polished and ready for the planning board to kind of work with on its own. So again, that's just another kind of bit of feedback from Josh. So, you know, maybe next meeting we have a little bit of a fuller discussion, you know, about, you know, how we want to approach that work over the summer.
Would people feel ready to have Josh come back next, on our next meeting, on June 27th? Or do people want to spend a little more time with the draft? And you're traveling, too.
Since I'll be away, maybe in July.
Maybe that first meeting in July.
They would give a little more time for outreach. I think some folks came to our meeting and said they wanted to go knock on doors, and that gives a little more time to do that. So that's, I think, July 11th.
All right. So if we could let Josh know, maybe pencil in the first meeting in July, that we would be ready for him to come back?
I will do that.
And we can put it on the agenda if there's anything that we want to discuss, just amongst ourselves, the next meeting. Any questions?
Quick question for Tim?
Yeah.
You mentioned you reached out to the Milton Scene and got it up there. Did you get it on Milton Neighbors also by chance?
I did not reach out to Milton Scene. Milton Scene, you know, I think they subscribe to either town social media or the town website. That was there, that was independent of us. They're actually pretty good about, if I hadn't seen it, you know, within the next few days, I would have done a little outreach, but I think they're pretty good about, you know, picking up the things that would be, you know, adventurous to their readers and kind of doing that on their own. So, and in terms of Milton Neighbors, I am a, I will tell you, I am in Milton Neighbors. I don't check it very often, and I certainly don't post. So that's something where if folks are, you know, I think as Milton residents, I don't think it would be inappropriate for you as elected officials and residents to use your social networks as, in addition to your other networks, to kind of spread the word about that. So, you know, please feel free to spread the word in any kind of social media group, you know, relevant to kind of Milton commentary. I would encourage that.
Great.
Okay, thanks, Tim.
Any other questions for Tim? We can now move to our citizen speak, and if there's anyone from the public or on Zoom, please raise your hand. We'd be happy to invite you forward. Yes, please. Come join us. Yes, please, yeah, you can come up to the microphone. Welcome. And if you can just state your name and address for the record, that's great. And you can pull that microphone up to you a little bit sometimes.
Okay, and I have the text of what I'm going to be saying, so I'll provide you copies.
Great.
Tim and consultant, at some point, there are extras you could give to them. This is what I'll be saying.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, yes.
Hi, my name is Thomas Doherty. I live at 247 Adams Street. Thank you for the opportunity to make these comments. In a few minutes, I'm going to address three topics. The first is the MBTA zoning and one aspect as it relates to that. As we all know, the zoning act itself, Section 3A, states that the community shall have at least one multifamily housing district of reasonable size located not more than half a mile from a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, or bus station if applicable. Milton itself has no such stations or ferry terminal within its border. And the Ashmont Station subway and bus station is 0.95 miles from the town border. Furthermore, the Mattapan Bus Station is not a Silverline Station. That's important because the MBTA guidelines themselves state that only, quote, "a community that has within its borders at least 100 acres of developable station area associated with one or more subway stations or MBTA Silverline stations, rapid transit stations, is a rapid transit community," quote, "and then thereby required to have 25% of its total housing units comprised of multifamily housing as a right." So let me slow down there. Therefore, Milton is not a rapid transit community. It has no such stations, no Silverline bus station associated with it, because the Mattapan line is not and has not been. And since 2008, there have been multiple occasions in which the MBTA has thought about adding it to the Silverline. That's never, never happened. So that leaves only the commuter rail stations outside of Milton's border, namely Reedville and Fairmount. But Milton has, by my estimation, fewer than five acres of developable land within that half mile of the Reedville Station. I mean, I'm not an expert, that's why I'll come to why I'd like the expert look at that, and only approximately 10 acres of developable land within half a mile of the Fairmount Station. That makes Milton an adjacent community. Please ask Alan Bishop, who's so expert and also your zoning consultant, to determine that exact acreage, because that's important, because that acreage calculation, those facts, will help demonstrate that the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities misclassified Milton. Those facts will support work for an adjacent community zoning and such a plan for Milton. That's what I have to say about that topic. So then I have two others. One is just very recent and ongoing, the accessory dwelling units. Last week, the Massachusetts Legislature passed House Bill 4707. They passed it in a matter of days. And it mandates, quote, "that no zoning ordinance or municipal bylaw shall prohibit unreasonably restrict or other, or require a special permit or other discretionary zoning approval for the use of land or structures for a single accessory dwelling unit or rental thereof in a single-family residential zoning district." It further states that owner occupancy of either the accessory dwelling unit or principal dwelling unit is not required. Wow. And no additional parking space shall be required for an accessory dwelling unit that's not more than half a mile from the commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, or bus terminal. So this is my view, which is, this is yet another Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities one-size-fits-all piece of legislation that deprives municipalities of discretion, and it is not a one-size-fits-all, because it will incentivize developers to build owner-occupied rental properties, driving up prices for potential homeowners, notwithstanding the fact that it's not required that the homeowner occupy or either of the elements. And it assumes that the accessory dwelling unit occupants within a half a mile of the stations or the terminals, they can do without a parking lot, they can do without a parking space, whatever the weather and whatever their needs. As I understand it, next, it would usually become a matter before the Senate and then a conference. But that's on, that's happening now. Lastly, Adams Streets, Quantum Street, I live on Adams Street, intersection plan with the guard at traffic lights there. My own view is a public hearing on all aspects of the proposed Adams Streets, Quantum Street intersection traffic lights is essential, not merely the important historic scenic road aspects. So five months ago, I saw it from the Department of Transportation. They have still not responded. The following information, and I'll start off with this. I wanted, number one, all documents concerning the proposed Adams Street and Squonham Street traffic signal design, including existing configuration use and accident data. What's the accident data so far? Why is it needed? As well as proposed use and accident estimates and all data for alternatives, if any, concerning the alternatives that they would make there, too. Last, all documents concerning the estimated ensuing traffic congestion, if such a new signal design is implemented, including modeling of the congestion effects of the three traffic signals that are within, literally within 500, this one would be within 550 feet of Cenagathers on one way and 800 feet of the Central Street and Adams Street traffic signal on the other. Such a short distance. And I would like to understand what the data is concerning those matters. So that's it. Those are the three things I wanted to just bring to the attention of the committee.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Yes, appreciate that. And if you want to stick around, our consultant will be attending later this evening in case there's any questions by the members. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to come in? Yes, please come in. If you can just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Robert Sacco, S-A-C-C-O.
Okay.
I live at 95 Dexter Street here in Milton. And the issue is, we have an extra house lot on our property that we'd like to put up for sale. We've just had it surveyed.
Mr. Sacco?
Yeah, sorry. You're on the agenda for the first item up. So you might want to just hold your comments until we get to your item.
We're going to call you up.
We'll call you up at the, yes.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, thank you. Just, we'll just finish citizen speak if there's anyone else. Tim, are you seeing anyone? And then we'll invite you up in just a moment.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I don't see anyone on the Zoom, no.
No one else on the Zoom? Okay. So, great. So with that, we can conclude citizen speak and move to new business. Approval-not-required plan, A and R for 95 Dexter Street. And Tim, if you just want to introduce this, and if you now would like to join us, please. Sorry. Thank you. We just...
Just to jump in the gun by just a few seconds.
That's all right.
So 95 Dexter Street is both a straightforward and very interesting approval-not-required proposal. As Mr. Sacco began to allude to, and I'm going to put a, I'm going to put the plan up on the screen so everyone can see. Does everyone see that plan?
Yes.
So the 95 Dexter Street is a sort of a lot that has two frontages. It goes from Dexter Street all the way back to Blue Hill Ave. It's exactly 12,000 square feet and has exactly 60 feet of frontage on either side. It is in the Residence C Zone, and the typical lot, the typical zoning compliance, lot in Residence C Zone requires 75 feet of frontage and 7,500 square feet of lot size. This is standard throughout the C Zone and applies in almost every case of a subdivision or an approval-not-required plan. Now, the exception is, and I don't have the zoning reference in front of me, it's in your email and is in the application form, but there is a provision in the Residence A, B, and C districts for certain oversized lots to be subdivided into undersized lots. And in this case, if you have a lot that is recorded prior to February 10th, 1938, and has less, not more than 12,000 square feet, but less than 15,000 square feet, and 60 feet of frontage, you can create two lots out of that 12,000 square foot lot. I don't know what the providence of that bit in our zoning, it's been there from the very beginning, but my instinct here is that it has lots just like this in mind. And so the Saccos are, you know, proposing an A and R to divide their 12,000 square foot lot cleanly in half, right down the middle, to create one 6,000 square foot lot with frontage on Dexter Street and one 6,000 square foot lot with frontage on Blue Hill Ave, which is what you see on this plan here. So I don't know if Mr. Sacco has anything else to add to that, but that's the basis here. And, you know, in my opinion, will be appropriate for the planning board to endorse this as not requiring subdivision approval.
Mr. Sacco, is there anything else you would like to add to that?
No, I guess he swabs it up pretty well.
Great. Any questions from the board?
Now, oh, I'm sorry, if anyone else had any questions. I had one note that I wanted to, hopefully, if you did decide to make a motion here. One thing that I kind of still need to work out with the applicant surveyor is the plan itself, the lines on the plan, the drawing is good, it shows everything it needs to show, but our, you know, our A and R rules require a couple notations on the plan that aren't there. We need a signature block. We need some notations saying that no determinative wetlands has been made or intended by planning board endorsement. That's a standard notation we have on A and R plans. And then a notation that says, and we put this on all A and R plans irrespective of zoning compliance or not. I believe this to be zoning compliant, but that's ultimately up to the building commissioner. And the notation saying, "planning board endorsement does not reflect compliance with applicable zoning requirements." These are standard things that we put on every A and R plan. You know, I'd like to talk to the applicant surveyor and just get those on there. So if the planning board, you know, did decide to vote to endorse this plan as requiring, as not requiring subdivision approval, I would just ask that, A, I be authorized to sign on the planning board's behalf pending those additional notations for a signature block, the non-endorsement of wetlands delineation, and the non-endorsement of zoning compliance.
Yeah, so that was my only question, was I noticed that there's a shed on the plan. So my question was, does that shed, will it meet the setback requirement of the new back lot line of the Dexter Street lot? But you answered that. The building inspector will determine that. Right?
Yeah, Mr. Sacco, I don't know if you know how far that shed is from the lot line. Ultimately, with an accessory structure, you know, it's an accessory structure, and if it holds up any kind of project, I'm sure the Saccos or their successors in ownership will handle it.
The existing shed is at least 10 feet, at least 10 feet from the property line that divides the, you know, the two lots. I think it's supposed to be eight feet from the back, but it's at least 10. You know, it's well within the limits.
Okay. Great, that was a good question. Okay.
And then a quick question. Tim, on the plan, it says 12,000 square feet, and then it says plus, or is that plus or minus, or does that mean the lot?
Yeah, that's plus or minus. Again, I mean, every indication that we have indicates that it's a 12,000 square foot lot. I think that's, you know, just something that, you know, again, is on the survey, just as kind of, you know, if it turns out that it's 12,001 square feet or 12,002 square feet, you know, that's, you know, we can, you know, if that's something that the board's concerned with, you know, that's certainly your prerogative to get clarity on that.
Well, the only reason why I bring it up is because the zoning states more than 12,000 square feet. So I really want it to be 12,001.
So if it's 200.35 on one side and 200.55 times 60, it's over 12,000.
Yeah. Okay, good.
It shows both dimensions, Jim, right? See, it shows the 200, and then it also shows the 200.55.
Mm-hmm.
And then, so it's fractionally over. Good, that's line, that's simple math. I'm happy. That's what I was hoping you guys would say.
Tim, what do the dash lines through both lots indicate?
That I'm not entirely sure of. I don't know if Mr. Sacco can clarify that.
What's the question?
There are dash lines, Mr. Sacco, dash lines that run on the plan through both lots.
Through the center.
Natural gas line you're talking about?
No.
Will you put the plan back up, Tim?
I was saying dashed lines.
You don't have any idea what these are, do you? I sure don't.
Are you talking natural gas?
No, I said dashed. You see how the lines are? You see how the lines are dashed?
I thought at first they were setback, but they're not because it's greater than setback.
Yeah.
So, Tim, when you're speaking with the surveyor, I think like you should take them off.
It's almost like a third, a third.
Right.
That could be all it is, just carving the lot into thirds. But sometimes when you see lines that are dashed like that, they're indicative of an easement. You know, it's not noted here, and it would be, but.
We, in our endorsement, though, the easement wouldn't factor into whether it met the requirement. It would just be whether they can build later.
Yeah, I know, I understand, yeah.
Right?
Exactly.
I had two at first was wondering what it's for, but, right.
Okay. So, Tim, do you have a preference to having, you know, the notations made and the signature block added, and then coming back to us with that, and we can just easily sign off, just making sure that's all included? Or is it?
Yeah, I think, you know, that's probably, you know, it'll, it's not a big, it's not a heavy lift, you know, for the surveyor to add those. So it's just a matter of getting in touch. So, you know, I think that's something that can definitely be done between now and the board's next meeting.
Yep.
And I don't think it would cause an undue delay, but I think, you know, those things are, you know, typically part of the plan, and, you know, we like to see them. So I don't think that's too much to ask, but I think, and just getting some clarity on what those lines are would also be helpful. I mean, Cheryl's right, if it's an easement, you know, that has effects on whether or not you can build. It doesn't have an effect on whether or not you can subdivide, which is the planning board's real concern here. But it would be good to know what they are, so we'll find that out.
All right. Great, so this, everything looks good. We just need a few things added to the application, and we'll defer it to the vote to our next meeting, just once those notations are added.
So how do I go about resolving that?
So, Tim, how would that best be?
Yeah, Mr. Sacco, I spoke with your wife earlier today, and I spoke with her last week about just trying to get your surveyor in touch with me. So if you can get in contact with your surveyor and have them give me a call or shoot me an email, it should be literally a five-minute conversation, you know, once your surveyor gets in touch with me. And then, you know, the planning board will have a fully notated plan that they can vote on. You know, it's just literally a matter of getting those notations on and resubmitted, you know, to me so I can get them to the board. Shouldn't be a heavy lift at all, it's just a matter of getting that done before the next meeting on the 27th, I believe.
Yep.
Okay.
That's great. And we'll look forward to being able to vote on it and sign off at the 27th. Okay, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming. The surveyor just needs to get in touch.
I've kept him several times, and I called him, and he doesn't answer because it's whatever is filled. So I don't know what else to tell you.
The surveyor?
Yeah, the surveyor.
Yeah.
We had a little trouble communicating with him, so, but we'll do whatever we have to. If I have to go over and personally.
Because it's very simple. Okay, that's great. And then he can get in touch with Tim.
Okay.
Great. Thank you for coming and.
Thank you.
Yes.
And what's the date of the next meeting?
June 27th.
June 27th.
Yes. Well, you don't even have to come in person, as long as Tim has those materials, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Okay. So now we can move on to our old business, discussion of the MBTA community's zoning. And I know Zoe wasn't available to come this evening, but we do have other team members?
They should be here any minute. I told them around 7:30 would be good to show up, so I'm keeping an eye on the Zoom. Not here yet, but I'm anticipating them any minute now.
Okay, great. So we'll get started, and then we can ask them the question. We don't need them to stay too long, but I think we should have them address Tom's question, and, which is a good way for us to be looking at this as we move forward, depending on what the decision is. So the last time when we met, we did the Granite Avenue North. And we were proceeding with our criteria checklist going through. We were able to get through that. So it looks like we have next on this would be the Granite Avenue South. Do we want to move on to that, or is there a different? I know Cheryl would really like to present on Elliot Street, but I still would like to go through, try to get through our Article 1 existing criteria on our checklist.
So I think it makes sense to.
Go to Granite Ave South.
Well, that was being based on the map, is that how the, because it's different than the spreadsheet, so. Tim, are you going to populate this tonight? I was populating it at the last meeting for Granite Ave North and sent that.
I can do that.
Okay, great, so.
So you have on this spreadsheet Elliot Street corridor next.
I think since we did Granite Ave North, we should may as well do South.
Okay.
And stick with.
Keep that sort of in order, yeah.
Yeah, finish East Milton. Makes sense to me.
Okay.
So, do you want to run through it just on each one, Meredith? Like the guiding principles and the?
Yes, so the first item that we had under A, guiding principles, was preserve the physical character of the town. And A1 was the allowed height is comparable to the existing district. And again, we can review, the ranking schedule was, five was the best, one was.
Right, sorry, go ahead.
Okay.
So we had given Granite Ave North a five because it matched, right? So Granite Ave South doesn't have existing height except for sheds, et cetera. So it seems like this one, like last time, if you look at A1 versus A2, we did not applicable on A2 because A1 applied. In this case, I would say A1 doesn't apply, and you wouldn't be looking at A2. Do you see what I mean with that? Because.
Yeah, I do see, because it's absolutely, there's nothing there right now, but the only thing that I would say is the allowed height is comparable to the existing in the district. I would relate that to the Cortland Circle, the folks across the street from Granite Ave as being comparable in the district, because I would see that as becoming eventually sort of a whole area, sort of a section of town. And I think that's where a lot of the concern from the Cortland Circle and Granite Ave neighborhoods felt like it was extreme height in comparison to.
But it's not a single-family district, it's not existing single families, it's not existing single family, so I.
If we say if it's just within that.
Yeah, so because when we, if we start looking at comparing it to Elliot Street, where we actually have a single-family homes within the district. Here, we don't.
Yeah, but they're right across the street.
I know they're across the street, but I wouldn't give them the same level of, as if it's within the district. In other words, you know, Elliot Street corridor, you've got 300 and some properties that are single-family that are within the district. Here, you've got basically two parcels, right, that are big parcels. So a big parcel that could, if the state wanted to, build something like a large maintenance facility, or whatever they chose they felt was important, because the lot is big enough to do it. So, in terms of the height, so I just don't think it's, if you want to say something in between, but.
What is it zoned? What is, how does Milton have it zoned? Is it in our, is it zoned, single-family? Like, I know it's state now, but what's the underlying zoning besides the state?
I don't have that.
Because maybe we need to look at that to determine if it's, if the town of Milton is, our underlying zoning is single-family, then I think it does have the same weight as Elliot Street.
Tim's looking it up right now.
That is known to Residence A.
So that's acre zoning, so it's single-family acre zoning?
And it's across the street from Residence C?
That's right. And some Residence B in the marsh and the golf course.
In the marsh is Residence B? All right.
So if the state decided just to pull up stakes and go, then it's acre zoning, single-family housing.
So it's two and a half stories?
Yeah.
And we're allowing?
Four and a half.
Four and a half? So.
I think that's what.
You give it a one, I give it a three, because I think it's a large parcel. And then I get to 8.2, and the other large parcels we have, we already have three to four to five to six-story parcels on them. So that's just the way I see it. Because it's not a five, this is not a 5,000 square foot parcel.
Where are those three to four to five to six stories? Close to this?
It says on 8.2, incomparable existing multifamily in parts of town.
In parts of town.
So we don't have a lot of multifamily, Jim, so it's wherever else we have it, right? So where do we have it that's not 40B that you can think of?
But we're on one still. I thought we were on one.
But these are all meant to kind of, like, if one applies, another might not. This is the way, this was kind of how you, like, if you look at the way we filled out in November for Granite Ave North, some don't apply because others do apply. So if you're looking at preserving the physical character of the town, what you're trying to look at is what is the physical character? Here, the physical character is sheds and parking lots and, you know, construction, or stone plows and salt and, you know, a park and ride. So like, it's not going to be comparable to that, obviously, although I'd say that the sheds are probably taller than 35 feet.
But does not the neighborhood across the street matter?
Of course it matters. It's not within the district, though. This says in the district. So you could get to that by other things, I think, you know, like by the neighbor, let's see what else on here.
Do we want to take a pause? Because we have Matthew Mattel from UTIL is here. I don't know if we want to welcome him in, or?
Okay, yes, please, welcome. Yeah.
Were you able to open it?
No, I still can't open it. Oh, great, thank you, welcome.
Thank you.
We appreciate your coming, and we are currently running through just sort of where we were with our, with the Article 1 that went before town meeting in all of our districts. But I just wanted to have the opportunity, if any members had questions. I know you have things that Tim has said that you are working on, and if you would like to just give us an update on the work that you're, things that you're looking at outside of this.
I think we're looking at the adjacent town scenario. That's something that is part of our scope to model. And then I think that's really where our efforts have been so far. I will disclose that Zoe is out, and I don't think we're ready to report back yet, but that's what we've been up to.
No, that's great. So during our Citizen Speak, we had a resident who did have a question, and I think it's something that I know I've been thinking about and questioning if we are looking at, and it falls along the lines of the adjacent community. And the question would be if it was reasoned by the courts that our trolley is not a subway, and we would fall into an adjacent community, and we would be, we would be looking at the stations, the commuter rail stations outside of Milton's border, namely Reedville and Fairmount. I know, we have a wonderful person who works in our GIS office. We've been looking at what would the actual acreage be that, within that half-mile radius of the Reedville station and the Fairmount station, and of that acreage that would fall within the town line of Milton and that radius, how much of that would actually be developable land within that? And I think what, I guess the ask would be is if maybe we could work with Alan Bishop in our GIS office and with UTIL to sort of look at what is that acreage and what do we fall into as an adjacent community?
So, Meredith, if I can just chime in real quick.
Sure.
I actually just had a conversation with Alan about this this afternoon, because I know Maggie has been asking about this. He's working on coming up with sort of the exact kind of acreage calculation in terms of the total area of those stations. Sort of the outside kind of edge of the radius kind of clips different parts of Milton. I've done a kind of quick and dirty calculation, and I think, as the Speaker at Citizen Speak alluded to, I think we can say with pretty much good confidence that there are not even 100 acres of station area of the commuter rail. My kind of, you know, rough calculation got me to around like 75 acres total. You know, so you would definitely not hit that 100 acres of developable area, because even within those 75 plus or minus acres, you know, the definition of developable area includes, you know, or excludes, I should say, roadways, wetlands, protected open space, other kind of protected spaces that, you know, simply just drawing the line around, you know, to draw the area doesn't capture. So I think, you know, just in terms of, you know, UTIL's work, if it's important for the board to know, because that's not something that I think we necessarily have in our capability to calculate, you know, via, you know, the state's definition of developable land, if it's important for the board to know exactly how much 3A-defined developable land there is within the commuter rail, you know, we can, you know, ask UTIL to kind of figure that out. If it's simply trying to figure out, are we credibly a commuter rail community? I'm confident saying that we're not, and we can definitely get a number of, you know, the total area of those commuter rail stations in town, which, again, I'm confident will come in below 100 acres. So, you know, it's up to the board on that.
So I guess that would make sense, just as a first pass, to know what our total acreage is. I don't think it would be necessary to know the buildable if the total acreage is less than 100, so.
Since, I just had a question. Since Matthew wasn't, hadn't joined the meeting when our resident, Mr. Dougherty, had made his presentation, could we allow Mr. Dougherty to come back and make that same presentation that he made earlier, just for the benefit of Matthew hearing exactly what we heard? Would that be okay?
That's fine with me if Tom, yeah, and Matthew, you can convey, and we do have a letter that's been provided by Mr. Dougherty, so, but why don't we just run through that one more time? That's probably a good idea. Well.
Yeah, Tom Dougherty, 247 Adams Street. Thank you, and thank you, Tim.
That's excellent. I mean, that's where I was coming from. So leaving aside how we get to the point of looking at the commuter rail stations rather than the other preface, right, having looked at the Matapan Bus Station, all of that, we'll go to the commuter. So that leaves the commuter rail station, and the question is, you know, those two stations, Reedville and Fairmount, are outside of Milton's border. And the definition will be, in my view, as it says, that the question then is, what is the acreage within Milton's border that is developable land that is itself also within five, half a mile, .5, half a mile, of the Reedville station on the one hand and the Fairmount station on the other? Now, I'm not an expert, but I can look at the GIS, and Alan Bishop can look at it much more expertly than I can, and see that there's areas that are not necessarily developable at all with regard to the type of land that it is. On the other hand, looking at just the totals, I can see that the developable land within half a mile of Reedville station, in my view, could be as little as 10 acres. And the developable land within half a mile, that's. And the developable land within half a mile, that's the Fairmount, sorry, and within a half a mile of Reedville, even less than that. But in any event, since the standard is less than 100 of developable, it would be really good to have experts look at how much of that, within the MBTA's requisite definition, is developable. And I would believe very confidently that it's going to be significantly less than 100. And therefore, that matters, because if it's correct that the zoning act requires that the district be located not more than half a mile from a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, or bus station, and we have gone through the fact that if it is not within a half a mile of a, if the trolley line is itself 1930s entirely above ground, set of vehicles, and a modality that stops at street intersections, right? And that ends at the Ashmont stop, where people have to exit to then get on after .95 miles onto the subway. It's not within Milton's territory that there's a subway station. We start there, then we go to, okay, there's no ferry terminal. Next, you know, is there a bus station? Matapan is a bus, has a bus station, so does Ashmont, but that's .95 miles away. Matapan is sufficiently close enough, but Matapan is, under the guidelines defined, it says, yes, it's a bus station, but it's not a silver line station. And under the guidelines, the rapid transit community is either one with a subway station or an MBTA silver line station. But it's never been, and it's been proposed at times to be a, to be studied, to be whether or not that Matapan station might, at some point, become a silver line station. But it hasn't, each time, it's never gone further. So that leaves the commuter rail stations, that leaves the question of those two stations, and how approximate it is in terms of developable land within Milton that's within also half a mile of those stations.
So you're saying it would be important, even though it's less than 100 acres of land area, that it's important to also know of that, what is technically buildable as well?
Yeah, because if you go, yeah, if you go to the guidelines, just so everybody gets it, so, you know, section, I think it's two, just to be clear, are all the definitions. And Section 8 is the section that talks about the total developable station area within MBTA community acres, and portion of the multifamily zoning district that must be within a station area, 0 to 100, 0%. In other words, they do categorize what is requisite, and in terms of any zoning application to Milton or to any community. And here, if you don't fit any of those, you end up with respect to being a, you know, subway station, commuter rail station, ferry terminal, or bus station within Milton. You have to look at what's adjacent, and then you have to look at how adjacent. And then, if it's that limited in its adjacency, 0 to 100, you're in a situation in which there's really no other applicable modality than being classified as an adjacent community, and putting forward, as I'm sure you will anyway, a plan in the alternative for an adjacent community. And this strengthens, I think, the factual data necessary for that aspect.
So how would that, Tim, would that be something that UTIL could work on? And just once Alan Bishop provided that geographic area to zero in on what is developable for the standards?
I mean, I guess, and just so like we're clear, like, if Alan, and he'll be measuring, you know, exactly the parcel sizes and the fractional parcels and everything like that, you know, if it comes out that we have less than 100 total acres of station area, you know, of a commuter rail station, then I think it follows that we definitionally cannot be considered a commuter rail community. So I guess I don't know if I see the practical value of kind of further drilling down into how much developable area there is in that area. Just because, you know, if it's determined that we're not a rapid transit community, then we're definitely not a subway or a commuter rail community, because we don't have 100 developable acres. And so then, you know, again, we would be whatever categorizations after that. So I just want to be mindful of, you know, not asking UTIL to do things that are duplicative of things. Now, if Alan, you know, comes back and says like, eh, it's real close, there's 102 total acres of station area, you know, around the Fairmount and Reedville station, then maybe I'd want to drill down. But if the big number is less than 100, then there's no way that we have 100 developable acres. And so it becomes a little bit of a moot point. I don't know if that's exactly what Mr. Dougherty's getting at, and, you know, if there's some additional virtue in finding that number, you know, happy to kind of consider it. But I also want to be, you know, mindful of the scope we have with UTIL, and kind of having them work on the things that, you know, are going to, you know, things that we can't do ourselves in-house to determine.
I think that's excellent. And I would just add one thing. It's not the arc diameter within, you know, within .5 miles as the arc resolves itself from each station. It's the piece within that that is also within Milton. So consequently, if the first three tenths of a mile were in Boston, and the next two tenths, it's that you're looking at the three tenths to two tenths, almost like a banana, that arc, or however it varies. And then even within that, and then as Tim says, if that itself is less than, that slice is less than 100 acres, then some amount less than that is developable. And perhaps Alan Bishop could estimate that within some range, as to be helpful. But it becomes undebatable then if it's, you know, as I think, significantly less in terms of that arc, if that's clear.
Thank you.
Yeah, just so you can kind of see, you know, I brought up, this is, you know, MHP, and Alan has made a map, you know, not dissimilar than this. This is the, this is the arc of the, the outer arc of the Fairmount line radius, half a mile. This dash line is Milton. So like what we're talking about is, you know, this, you know, little bit of kind of Smith Road and Beacon Street circle over here, you know, in the town of Milton. That's a certain number of acres. And then, you know, down here on Big Blue Drive, you know, again, this is Reedville.
Exactly.
This is this corner here.
Sorry, Tim. I was just going to say that I have some map exports from Residency, where it's much clearer which parts in Milton and which is not, but we can maybe get to that later. The Residency tool is pretty helpful.
And it's nice that Tim points that out, because in one of those, I think it might be, may have it backwards, but in one of those, there are two little, two pieces of the arc. One, because Boston itself jots in, jots in a bit, and so you have to measure both. But even then, it's going to be, I think, helpful as a factual data piece for you.
So that's something that?
So I think, let's hear from Alan. He's working on this. I talked to him this afternoon. You know, hopefully in the next couple of days, he'll have a number for us. If it's close, then we can talk. But I do think that, I'm fairly confident we'll find that it's definitely less than 100 acres. So, you know, we'll provide that data as soon as it comes in.
So I did reach out to Alan, and he did create a, the map for me, I think it was back in January. And I did just send it to Tim, if he wants to bring it up. And he identified, he took the MAPC map that Tim just had, and did the, just the Milton. And so, and I don't even remember why I asked him to do this. It was after one conversation, and then things happened, and I didn't follow up on it. But it is interesting to see the, what Alan did create. And so then I've followed up to find out how many acres are in it. So you can see where it hits Milton, within the half-mile. So he's done a great job. I know he's really busy, so I don't want to pressure him to do it. But I think it's really interesting to see how much, like, what parts of town are within the half-mile of our true subway stations.
I should also note that there is, and I think this might have been what Mr. Dougherty might have been referring to, unless I'm mistaken. There is an element of the Blue Hill Ave. station that captures this over here, also within, you know, a number of different radii. But again, this plus Fairmount, plus Reedville, you know, again, it might get you to 75, 77 acres. So we'll get that, we'll get that figure, and if we want to drill down deeper, we can certainly do that. But I think if it's not crossing the 100-acre threshold, then, you know, it becomes a moot point.
Great, thank you. And that's great information, just for UTIL, just as we follow along with this, so. Any other, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And did anyone else have anything, any other questions on any of the districts for UTIL while they're with us? Or should we?
Well, if we get to go through some analysis that I've done on my own, I would like to suggest that if we agree, that we'd ask UTIL to take a look at it and sort of map it out with the compliance model, some of it. And I can get to that when we get there. So if we have time for that, that's, I can only take the analysis so far, because I don't, I don't have the school set with the compliance model.
And I want to make sure we really dedicate time to that.
Can I ask what analysis are you referring to?
What I emailed, or Tim sent to you, what I had sent to him. It's if you, first looking at the net new in the Elliott Street corridor, and then looking at the Elliott Street corridor, and what's driving sort of the density there is the minimum lot size and the number of units per lot. Looking at whether, if we could adjust that, what that might mean. But I did it based on kind of, on a parcel basis, because of the parcel analysis that I used for the net new, which I can go through when we get to it. And then, so there's that, because the idea with that was, what if you could get a little more density in the transit area? Then you could drop the density elsewhere. Because what people seemed most opposed to was the density elsewhere. That's being driven by the density in the transit area. So it's really not a proposal, it's an analysis, that I'd like UTIL be able to look at.
So I agree. What I was going to suggest is maybe it might be more efficient to do, go through everything that we have. Because rather than keeping UTIL on while we're just running through all the different districts, maybe at our next meeting, when Zoe is here, make that our focus and priority of the Elliott Street district and that, because I?
There's other districts, too, that I've suggested that I'd like them to look at, too. But whether it's today, or that we get to it today, or at the next meeting, but it's not just the Elliott Street corridor that I'd like to talk about.
Yeah, and I'm thinking maybe when the whole team is here, that would be preferable, but?
I mean, as you know, Meredith, I've been talking with you about doing this for a number of meetings, and I finally sent it out to the rest of the members, because we hadn't gotten to it. And it's been actually, you know, I started this back in January. So I just want to be clear, we need to get to this point and start talking about these things. So I really, if it's not tonight, I really hope it's not going to get pushed out yet one more meeting, because we're in the middle of the summer, people won't be paying as much attention.
Do you want to skip the other districts? I'm just thinking that's going to take a considerable amount of time. And I thought we could just sort of push through this.
If we can push through this, I just want the others to, you know, just hear my piece about that.
We want to discuss what we currently have in the zoning first, and then an exercise of what we could do. I thought it would be a second, you know, a second step. But if we start with knowing where our base is, then we can look at what alternatives and what other districts we would like to look at, and different ways of looking at it. And I'm just thinking of UTIL's time, too, and Zoe's not here tonight.
So if we're just talking about where our base is, I think our base, and that's why I think I had reached out to Alan in January to do this. I firmly believe our base, if you look at the statute, it is half a mile from a subway station. So I feel like we need to start in this map of a half a mile. You know, we do have a statute that I think of a pretty consistent saying, I think we need to follow the statute, and I think following the statute where it says a half a mile from a subway station is the place to start. Because even if the guidelines are, or if we're deemed not to be a rapid transit, because that's all in the guidelines, you know, there's still a statute that we still need to do. So I would like to spend some time, and obviously it's not tonight, at some point, looking at the districts within the half a mile of transit.
So I think that's what a lot of these are, that are on our list, are currently within the half-mile of the, if it is deemed a subway, the trolley, that these will be within that, so.
But I also think when we go through and look at the guiding principles, you've got to weigh what's the existing character within a half a mile, and what the opportunity is there, and what's a reasonable expectation for that area. I mean, if you said, okay, the statute doesn't say preserve historic properties, the statute doesn't say some other things that we might put in the guiding principles. So we have to be, you know, pretty mindful. If we're going to start putting other criteria into it, then it's not just the statute anymore, any of it. So the statute doesn't say anything about height. The statute doesn't say anything about, it says 15 units in acre density, minimum, but it doesn't say you can't go 50, 60, whatever. Doesn't say you can't go high-rise. So, you know, let's be careful about saying, let's just do what the statute says, because we're not going to do that. We're going to put a bunch of other criteria on it.
Yeah, and I'm not saying just do it, I just think that's the starting point. Like, why are we looking at other places that are outside the half-mile? You know, that we haven't, one of the reasons I think people were not in, I mean, the reason people were not in support was the districts that were chosen. So clearly, we need to look at other districts, and as you mentioned. And I just think that the starting place is really half-mile from a subway station. But that's just my position.
I just want to make one more point about that. The town, planning board and select board, the members who were on the boards at those times asked for 50% to be allowed to be outside of the half-mile, because half-mile, within a half-mile is also Boston, and the land area that could be used for it is diminished because of it being on the border with Boston. So this board, under a different constitution, and the select board, asked for that via a letter to EO HLC. So that's why it got included. Other towns were in the same position and wanted that kind of flexibility. So flexibility was put into it. You know, so we also have to be mindful, if we say, the town is saying that the guidelines aren't enforceable, so we have to pick and choose which parts of the guidelines we like and what we don't like. But that's kind of, in a sense, not consistent, let's just say it's not consistent. So let's use our guiding principles, I think.
That's what I'd like to go back to and?
Because it's tailored, the guiding principles are tailored to Milton's condition.
All right. So does that sound good? So the next meeting, we will get through, because we'll hopefully get through where we were on Elliott Street corridor?
If we get, let's see how far we get with this tonight, and then we can see.
Yeah, and then we can, I just don't want to keep UTIL on.
Oh, I see.
That's my point, is I just, they're on the clock, and I was thinking it would be more efficient for us to do, go through the districts, look at all the criteria. And then, our next meeting, we'll be able to focus on the presentation that you'd like to make. Does that sound good? Or do you want UTIL to stay and we can?
No, they don't have to stay on.
Okay, and if we get to it, we can, I just don't know that we'll get to it before 10, so. All right, so thank you. I think we're, I think that, if there's any other questions for UTIL's team? Anyone else? All right, and so our next? Anyone else? All right. And so our next meeting is June 27? And I hope that you and Zoe can both join us.
Okay.
And Matthew, I think we've got a biweekly meeting on Thursday to just kind of check in. So I'll see you then.
Yeah. And Tim, you'll keep us abreast of all of these other conversations so that when we come back, we're ready to engage.
Hundred percent.
Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you, Matthew.
Have a good night. Okay. So where we were, we were on A1. So what did we decide? Is this a not applicable? Because we know that it's, it's zoned for the height of two and a half. We had four and a half, but there's currently a DPW, a use that there is no existing structure.
So like I said, I think this should be, hearing your point about the, some of your point about the neighborhood across the street, I don't think that that should be applied directly to this parcel. So I can see it being somewhere in the middle in terms of a numerical.
All right. Others, what do we?
I tend to think that the physical character that I'd compare this particular area to would be, you know, the neighborhood across the street. That's just me. I don't think, when I think of physical character reference, I don't think of salt sheds, just because they're there. But that's my view. You know, it's-
And my view is just because there's an existing, like, salt shed, or, those are easily removed. So if, you know, even look at my property, and if we ever decide to develop it, I'm sure they would take down our woodshed. So we have woodsheds and greenhouses and, but the surrounding area is single-family housing. So I don't necessarily think that just because you have a salt shed and open space, and driveway space, that you shouldn't be following what the underlying zoning is. So I do think it's a single-family neighborhood.
Are you all suggesting a number?
I gotta stick with my one, but it might be too low. But I really, yeah, I mean, I think it should be a one.
Yeah.
I'll compromise. I'll put a two.
Well, we need to come with a joint one, I'd say.
All right. Well, I, yeah, I think-
So if you have a one, and a one, and a two, and a three, and then, how about Sean? You can do an average.
Yeah. I mean, I'm either a one, or I'm a two at the most, you know, that's-
All right. So let's just put it as a two. Because we have other things to address on height.
Right.
And this one, at four and a half stories, other parts of town where we have multifamily, we have, like, if I look at the chart that I've done in the past, Milton Station West, we're allowing four and a half stories. Elliott Street, 131 Elliott Street is four to five, so I call that four and a half. So I'd say here at four and a half, it's comparable to multifamily elsewhere. So I would give it a five.
Yeah. If it's in other parts of town, I would have to agree with that. If it's our multifamily housing.
Because we just don't have, I mean, most places that we have it, I mean, if you think of multifamily at Fuller, Fuller Village is also four to five stories.
So that means every zone, besides the Elliott Street corridor, is going to be a five in this category. Right? Just jumping ahead. Right?
Mattapan Station and Milton Station, but not Blue Hills Parkway, or Elliott Street corridor, or Milton, East Milton Square, right?
Yeah. I guess my big problem is that I don't really want to see anything built here. So as we go down the list, I'm just skewed.
Yeah, I mean, you know-
Same thing with East Milton.
I think we all know that part of our problem is Granite Ave South is required to get Granite Ave North. So we can't say nothing here, is my view.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have to-
Well, you could cut Granite Ave South and just include the salt shed that the DPW, and not do Heritage Hall, and not do the parking ride. I don't see why you couldn't just add to it till you get to five and stop.
The DPW yard, and the salt shed and the parking ride are one parcel. So you've got to, you got to take both of them. You can segregate out the Heritage Hall, because that's a separate parcel. But the state property is one parcel.
In doing some research, I don't know, I don't think I have any of it in this, but I can look for it. There's a, I came across a heritage, or a, Heritage Hall is owned by the-
American Legion?
American Legion. American Legion had partnered with a housing developer, and they built veterans' housing with a new hall. It was somewhere in Massachusetts. So if they're interested, they should look at that and think about whether they envision something like that for their property. Because if you leave them out, then they don't have the option to do it. And, you know, they might want the option at some point in the future. It's up to them to decide if they would want to use it, take advantage of that option.
Yeah. And the only other thing that we're considering is multifamily housing can be two families and three families. And those would be maybe three stories, but not necessarily four and a half. So-
Yeah.
I mean, that I would tolerate there, but, yeah.
So one thing, I think that-
Three, maybe in there?
I mean, I personally think that if we, everywhere else that we have multifamily, if it's taller, then why are we making this neighborhood called out to be lower than what is being, is being allowed elsewhere, or already built elsewhere for multifamily? Because some neighborhoods have single families also right next to the multis, that are even closer than across Granite Ave. And they just have to be consistent. If we're saying something is okay one place, then why isn't it okay someplace else? That's what this is trying to get at, is-
Because this neighborhood made it crystal clear that they don't want this. And Elliott Street made it crystal clear that they do want it. So I, that's exactly why.
And the only other thing that I would say-
You got to listen to your constituents at some point, I'm sorry.
The height contributed to the number of units, to the 530. By reducing the height in this area to two and a half stories, we can take advantage of the land area, not keep the height at a limit, get some units, get half of the number of units.
Well, remember, remember that what's driving the density for this area was lower density elsewhere. So if you, if you just keep the land area here and lower the density, we're only, we're not going to hit that 15 units an acre.
So we would need to find an alternative.
So we would need to find an alternative. So the, you know, so if you think about whether you think this is a good location or not, but if you're going to allow, you have a larger parcel, it's one, it is a place that makes more sense to have a little more height. Not necessarily maybe the height that this is, but versus 5,000 or 7,500 square foot lots, where you're definitely not going to want a little more height. So unless you're going to go 15 units an acre everywhere, you're going to have to have someplace that goes higher than two and a half stories. You're not going to make, it's not going to work. It's not going to get to the 15 units an acre.
I just don't think it should be here, personally, but-
And the way that I'm understanding this process is we're looking at every district as itself, not necessarily in conjunction with others.
Okay.
So I do think it allows, the area allows for more density, but I don't necessarily think it should be four stories. We've heard pushback through the process, 440 Granite Ave, and now the public forums with the overlay in East Milton, that four stories is not a preferred. And we said this when we went through the 440, we specifically said, this is not going to set a precedent for anywhere else in East Milton. So, so I don't think that this needs to be four stories down at Granite Ave. I think two and a half stories would be definitely adequate. And maybe this is one when there's a bonus of, there could be a bonus for something else.
So I think that what you just said, the two and a half, is covered in the first one that we just did, and gave it a two. But if you just looked at this, this height is what is allowed for other multifamilies in town. I think you have to say that, yes, it is the same height as what's allowed elsewhere. It may not be that that's going to be the criteria that you want to select to use it. But just in terms of, if we're trying to use each one of these objectively for each district, I mean, so you may not like that particular criteria, but I think that's, that's what this is driving at. In other words, you're not trying to do eight stories here, and you have eight stories nowhere else in town. So this is, this is set to something that we have elsewhere in town. So I think you have, if you're going to use this one, it has to be acknowledged that that's the case.
What is different in this is that where we have those taller buildings, the five, six stories, it's because of the topography and the history of what exists there already. Both are sort of-
131 Elliott was not that tall before, when it was the Ice Cream Hendry's.
Right. But it's set down on a topography where it slopes downward, and it works. It's the base of Milton Hill, and everything's up from that. So, all right.
So we have to pick a number, so we can keep going.
Yeah. I would say three on this. It sounds like we're-
I said five. So where's everybody else?
So three, so you're saying that three, how many stories?
And I'm factoring in two family and three families as well. Three-
Yeah. So I appreciate and can support two and three families. I don't really support big.
But it's saying compared to other, and we do have Hendry's 36 Central, we do have multifamily 88 Wharf with larger units. So this is saying, how does it compare?
It's how it compares. Remember, the thing that you get with more is you get affordable units. You also can get accessible units. You know, two and three families, you're not going to put an elevator in, you know. So there's, you're not going to get 10 units probably, so you're not going to get affordable. I mean, that's another, that's another criteria that we'll get to. But it is something that having a little more height allows a little more units for. That's, so I think if you're, if you're thinking about what this is trying to get to, is that by allowing this, you're allowing something that you can't allow somewhere else. You know, you really aren't going to have a large enough property to allow it somewhere else. There's very few parcels that are this size. And, you know, there will be some, if we look at alternate locations, there are a few, but not, so there could be some alternative to this. But I don't think you want to say that something doesn't, it doesn't exist here because you don't like this location. Because then you're saying that this size is also not going to work anywhere. And then we're going to run into, can we meet the 15 units an acre, right?
So, so are you saying it's like a one-size-fits-all if we go to a three or a five here? Because then, I guess I'm not getting it. But that's okay. You know what?
I feel like three is sort of neutral. So we can, we'll have to come back to this and decide.
Three with an asterisk.
Yeah. It's not height. We're not picking stories. Three doesn't mean three stories.
Right. This is-
Right. It's a-
It's a preference.
Yeah. Is it comparable to multifamily? And I feel like that's sort of in between.
I'd say the next one is not applicable, because there's no existing building size to compare it to. Allowed building size is comparable to multifamily in other parts of town. I mean, this, again, I think these are, yes, these are fives. But because if you're allowing the same size-
So let's say we all run through Granite Ave South, and we all agree that everything's a five. Where do we take the information from there?
Well, then you say, okay, what, you're saying we want an alternative, because that wasn't highly supported, right? Do you apply that same criteria to a different site? Otherwise, you have, you know, eventually, we're going to have to wrestle with the fact that you can't have low density, lower density in the Elliott Street corridor, where the single-family homes are, if you don't allow for more height or more density somewhere else. And we already know that. So if we score these things low here, then are you going to score them high in another location when they have the very same, you know, criteria, or characteristics? Like they have the same size, or they have single families next to it, or what have you? Are you going to score everything consistently then? Because this isn't about whether somebody supports it or not. This is about whether, how does this particular parcel stack up against this criteria? Then you go back into whether it starts being a bit more subjective. This was supposed to be a way to try and apply objective criteria to what we have, but also to apply it to something else that could be an alternative.
Yeah. I guess for me, every district is going to be subjective and not objective. So I'll have to try to change my way of thinking while we're doing this. So bear with me.
Yeah. So allowed building size is comparable to multifamily parts in other town. I would say there's nowhere else in other parts of town that we have 530 units.
We do at Winter Valley, probably. But, all right. So you want to say, what do you want to score it?
So that I would say-
Because we don't have too many sites this big, that's why.
Yeah. I would say a one on that. 530 units.
But then you're saying, we have, you're taking a large parcel where you have some opportunity to do something-
But we're saying the size is comparable to other multifamilies.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. Because we also just have to remember, all this comes under preserve the physical character of the town. And the physical character of the town, it really isn't four stories. And it rarely is at three stories.
Now, we're not on height.
Yeah, right. But just, it's all under preserve the physical character.
So allowed, allowed-
I still would like to see this a little higher than a one, then I'd like to see it a two.
How do others feel?
I mean, again, 530 units. What is 530 units in Milton?
You have to look at that on a, like, an 88 Wharf, and look at this parcel size, and extrapolate a bigger parcel. Because we don't have this, you know, this size parcel very many places, right? So that's kind of one of the challenges. It's like, I took a look at the Elliott Street corridor, if you remember, and looked at how many units in the same, like, length of roadway. Because you've got multifamily, you've got Milton Hill House, you've got 131 Elliott, you've got 88 Wharf, and you're going to have the Webb Mill. And you space all of those up, and you add them up, and they're, you know, it's about the same in terms of the zone capacity. It's just you don't think of it that way, because there's a road through it, and it's been there a long time. And this one is just a big parcel. But remember, the design standards required for roadways of multiple buildings. So, I mean, you could probably, like, take that Elliott Street corridor, model it all out, and plop it over on, you know, Granite Ave South, and just see what it looked like. But, you know, that's, you know, it's, that's what I was trying to explain at a certain point in the process. We have some of this already. It's just, we don't see it in this, because we don't have this kind of empty lot very much.
How many units are at Fuller?
300 or something? 350, I think we-
At Fuller, yeah, about 300 and-
And how many acres is that?
30. 60.
They have a lot, they have a lot of acreage.
Yeah.
But they, they kind of, the buildings are still kind of concentrated in an area, though, with a lot of setback from the street.
And I think the key is the allowed building size. So I think that's where the, why the one-
Well, it's like, it's the FAR. Remember, we tailored the FAR to match up with what we have elsewhere. That's why I give it more than a one. It's not like we're allowing 10 times the FAR that we have elsewhere. You know, like, if we look at the FAR, that's allowed, like, FAR at 131 Elliott's, 1.35. Milton Station West, one. And Granite Ave South, 1.1. 88 Wharf is 1.5. So it's smaller than two of the examples that we have, and it's the same as Milton Station West. That's why I think it deserves more than a one.
Go to a two.
Can I, can I ask a question that maybe, hopefully, will clarify things for folks? Because I think the way that these criteria are phrased is referential back to Article 1. I mean, these are- I mean, these are, these are the Article One sub-districts. And, you know, when we say allowed height is comparable to. So I, I think where maybe some of the confusion or kind of disagreement is coming from is whether you're looking at this as an exercise of like, okay, we're going to apply these criteria to Article One, which was, which was not your article, but these are your principles that you think are important. Or are you trying to apply these principles to what you want Granite Ave North or South to be? Because I think depending on which view you're taking, you know, I, I don't think it's, you know, and I don't mean to throw a grenade at things, but it's undeniable that the Article One allowed height in Granite Ave South is comparable to existing multifamily in parts of town excluding 40B projects. Whether it was three and a half or four and a half stories, we have three and a half and four and a half multifamily buildings in town. You can't deny that. But if we're talking about what you want Granite Ave South to be, then maybe you don't want the allowed height to be comparable to existing multifamily in other parts of town. So I think just kind of being like super clear and focused on what you want to get out of the scoring exercise will kind of help, I think, settle some of the disagreements.
Yeah, Tim, thanks for bringing us back to that because I think that's, that is what has become the challenge here and how we're looking at it. And in my view of it is that it is the latter that Tim described that my mindset is, is focused on. But again, we should just agree on what we're doing. I, I did, I did think that the exercise was about looking at each of the districts and determining what we felt was, you know, palatable within, you know, the district. You know, not, not trying to get it back so that it complies with what, you know, was in Article One. But we're going to, we're going to spend an awful lot of time and we're not, we're going to come up with numbers that won't be meaningful if, you know, unless we're all using the same approach, right?
I think it's kind of hard on this to say like what you want it to be because it's not giving a story.
There's nothing there now.
It's like, you know what I mean? It's like, it's not saying, do you think three stories is appropriate? It's saying, is it, is it, Matt, because we were starting with this, remember, this was set up to be a review of Article One districts. So like if you said, all right, that we think these criteria are important, how do they relate to the Article One districts? And then we could come back with another, you know, sort of. One of the things that's challenged for me is I know that the way we arrived at some of this wasn't based on, we said, oh yeah, that's the exact height we think we need here. It's just that we needed to get to the compliance model, right? And so that's why, you know, it concerns me that, you know, we just, we kind of throw that, if we throw that out the window, you know, what are, what are we going to end up with eventually? So that's why I kind of keep coming back to, well, if we have to, if we still think that that's appropriate to do lower density someplace and higher density someplace, we have to have a good system for reading the other place. You know, and so that's what I think what we're trying to wrestle with. When I'm saying, if what we say here is going to be applied to everywhere, that's an alternative place, right? So is there something about in terms of these criteria, not, not all the criteria?
And I think the challenge is here is there's nothing that exists here. And it's, we're trying to.
Yeah, so in this.
Compare it to things where it's completely a unique site.
Yeah, so this, in this case, that's where, if it's starting from new, then one way is to say, okay, it's single family. It wasn't, it was only recently somehow put under single family because it was unzoned for a long time. But, but, you know, if you're looking at where else there is multifamily, like I said before, if we were allowing eight stories here, or we were allowing FAR three, or five, or 10, then it would be way out of character with anything else in town, right? So is this, is what's allowed in Article One for here in character with someplace in town? Not, now this, these, these two items were about that, someplace else in town, not about across the street. So if you said, okay, across the street, no, it's not. But it is, it is what we have elsewhere in town. Then you have, you would have to give the allowed height and the allowed size a high score because we do have these elsewhere in town. You don't have to do it for, you know, something like in the district. So even the building typology, is it comparable to existing? You could give that a low because the existing, if you said a single family across the street. But the other two pieces there should be high.
Because I think this is going to be a challenge on this district for us. And I'm realizing how slow it is and it's already 20 till nine.
Do I go to a different district?
Let's go to a different district because I think it's going to be much easier for us to move through the other districts because we have something to compare it to. And then I think at the end, we can sort of assess where our needs are and look at, you know, Granite Ave South in a context of where, where we could get other units, to your point, that we would have to make up.
Can I ask a question? So this particular category where it reads allowed height, for example, allowed height is comparable to existing in district. And when you read down to the third bullet, allowed building size is comparable to existing, does it intended to mean in district? Because we have.
That's NA.
Pardon me? That what?
That would be NA, not up.
No, 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 I'm just asking in terms of the language, right? Where it reads to existing, does it mean in town because we have?
No, that one would be to, to district, yeah, because right below it is to in town, right?
Okay, because if you read through, there's, there's a series of these that say comparable to existing. And my question is, should it be, should, should we assume that it's comparable to existing in district or in town?
In district. So then what we would do is you could say you would give low scores to the ones that are in district and high scores to the ones that are elsewhere in town.
I'm not, I'm not critiquing, you know, it, I'm just saying it's not written fully. So, you know, if you're looking at it, and if I'm looking at it, I'm saying to existing, but it doesn't say in district, am I, am I referring to in town or am I referring to in district? There's one that says in town, there's a series that, one that says in district and then the other says, you know, existing. You follow what I'm saying? So if I'm, I'm going to write in to existing in district, okay?
So if you drop just to the, before we do what you suggested, Meredith, let's just go to 8.7, for example. District includes area with significant tree coverage. I think we can agree that there's not there because it's mostly paved, right? So can we give that a five? We can come back to those other few, rather than skip the whole district, Meredith? We can just come back to the other ones that we've been, I think you could also say.
Land is vacant, land is vacant, five?
Yeah, I'm sorry, which one was that?
C, that's, that's C.
Oh, you're jumping to C. Okay, just quickly, the typology is comparable to existing. I think you could give that a low because the typology's not, so you could give that a one. I'm just trying to like do the ones that we can do without discussion, right?
Yeah, if you want to go through, just speed, yeah.
The allowed building size is comparable to existing, I guess we could come back to that. We said not A because there's really no, there's nothing there on the existing. But you could also say, okay, if it's just generally the neighborhood, then you would give that one a low.
Give it a one, right?
You'd give that one a one. And then I would say you bump like the two that compare it to existing parts of, or other parts of town. You give those a five and you've given the other things a low number. So, and that way, what you're saying is it's not, these things aren't so applicable to here, but they apply to elsewhere, which is actually the way this was discussed.
That's what we've been, yeah, looking at.
So if, if I can just run that thought through. If you gave 8.2, you know, higher than a three, and you gave 8.4, the same whatever higher, I'd say five on those. And then you would keep the others low except for the tree coverage. And the required open space is comparable to existing. It's actually, I did a calculation there, there is like open space there that does equal up to about 40%. So it's about the same.
So, so to follow that, 8.2 would be a five, 8.3 would be a one.
Correct.
8.4, using that same logic, would be a five.
Right.
8.5 would be a one.
Correct. So you could bump back up to your.
8.6 would be a one, right?
It's a, no, because there is some, it's all paved right now. I don't really.
Well, I, when I consider in district, I'm considering, you know, we're referring to the, to the neighborhood, right? In some of the previous.
You know, it's interesting, there's really no open space requirements in the existing. I don't know, we can probably just, maybe we should come back to that.
But if you look at it, it's actually there, right? You see front lines and side yards and backyards.
That's what I'm saying, like what's required in the zoning is 40%, you know? So it's, it's pretty.
Close to existing.
Pretty close to existing is what I'm saying. What you're saying is single family might be higher than 40%, I'm not sure. In a C district, it's, it's pretty tight. In an A, it's higher, obviously. So I don't know, maybe give this something in the middle.
Three?
Well, I mean, the way, the way that I think about this, and sorry to interrupt, but I think because, because on North, you gave A6 a five. If we stipulate that open space is a good thing that we want to encourage, the required open space is not comparable to existing because there's no, you know, there's, there's very little open space required. And actually, what exists on the site right now is not open space by any kind of reasonable definition. So like, it's good that the required open space is not comparable to the existing, right? So like, it's, you know, literally answering the question, that score doesn't get after, I think, what the judgment you're trying to make about the district, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Does make sense, yeah.
Open space would be better than what the existing condition is on the site right now.
Yeah, and, but in this case, we would score it a one, right?
Like Tim's saying, score it a five, like, like North, because we're going to, we're requiring more open space than what exists. So this is the challenge of the existing use on the site. We're talking, now this case, you're talking about the existing use on the site, right? As all paved.
Which is all open space right now.
Which is all open. That's what I was saying.
It's all paved though.
Yeah, but it's, there's nothing.
All right, give it a three.
All right, can you, how about we run through these numbers real quick? Because I, I think I got what we're talking about, but also I want to hear you all say the number. So A4.
So, Tim, A2 should be a five.
Well, we agreed it was a three, right? But now we're jumping to five.
Well, you said a five.
He wants to hear my number. My number's a one. So that's, if he wants to hear my number, that's my number.
Okay, sorry. If we're excluding two and three family, which I consider multifamily, but if we are, then I would give it a, you would set a five.
So, all right, so we don't have agreement on what that number should be.
Well, if we all say our number and then get the average, we would have agreement, right? No? Okay.
Yep.
I, I think what we talked about earlier, where, again, if 8.3, for example, allowed building size is comparable to existing in district, that would have to be a one. It has to be because in district, you have nothing close to be compared to what, what could be there.
All right.
And now, if that logic.
You're doing A1, sorry?
I, I was on A, A.3.
A.3, right. I have that as a one, yeah.
But, but, you know, I also understand what was said earlier and allowed height is comparable to existing multifamily in parts of town excluding the 40B. You know, it would be comparable to 88 Wharf, it'd be comparable to.
131 Elliott.
131 Elliott.
Milton Hill House.
So, so if, yes, if it's comparable to those, then.
Then that would be a five.
That'd be a five, right.
So we're not saying if we like that or not?
Correct.
It's not a.
We could come, like, that's another, like, level, I think, that we get to next. Is like, because once you say you don't like the height that's allowed in other places, then are you going to allow it anywhere? Because then you start looking at Milton Station and then you start, you know, because it's like, so you have to.
But I think.
Be very subjective with all of this, district by district, which is what I thought we were going to do.
Is that some things are in district, some things are in other parts of town, and some things just say existing, so we don't know if it's existing in other parts of town or within the district.
Yeah, this should be district on this one in particular where it says existing, just so you can add district.
And I think that's where the neighbors are saying, we have, there's no height right now at all. So going to four and a half is a dramatic change. So there's nothing, there are things in other parts of town, but what they're, even though it's salt piles or sheds, they're not used to seeing any development at all. And so that's where the concern is. So if we're saying it exists in other parts of town, yes, but there, it's appropriate in other parts of town to have that height.
But it's a conversation that needs to happen in all those parts of town because you're, you can't let one neighborhood say it's okay in another neighborhood. And so I, I think this is just a, this in particular is, whether this district is sub, at this way it's set, is comparable, is either a yes or a no in some ways. And then whether you like it or not is another.
So is it, is it existing district? So if it's an existing district, it is not comparable to the existing district because there's nothing there.
No, no, that's, that's right. So if you look at 8.2, for example, and 8.4, those are the ones that are comparing it to other parts of town where there's multifamily. So you're saying here that if you're giving it a low number, then you're saying four and a half stories is not comparable to anywhere else in town, when in fact it is.
Yeah, so I guess that's my problem is I don't, I think every neighborhood should be its own distinct and we should not be comparing it to other parts of town. Every neighborhood has its own flavor, they have their own tolerance of size and height. They know what they want best. So I don't think we should be comparing it to other parts of town.
Well, you know that we don't have 15 units an acre in very many places in town. So we're going to be changing the town. And then you're going to have to have criteria that you can explain to every part of town that it's a consistent, it's consistent at least at the start and then it can be looked at, you know, more specific to what's on the ground already there. But I think it's, it's misleading to think that it's not going to change. Elliott Street Quarter's not 15 units an acre right now. And that would be significant change to make it 15 units an acre. So we have to recognize that this is going to mean that there's going to be buildings that are different than what we have today in some places. But we're trying to, what, where we have multifamily on larger parcels, not make it too dissimilar from what exists already. That's what this was trying to.
What exists already within those, within that area, within that district, right?
Why doesn't everyone, I'm going to make the suggestion, why doesn't everybody independently go, go through this on their own and we'll come back together and have this conversation? But it's, it's almost nine and, you know, basically we have an hour left if we're journeying at 10, and we've only gotten through half of a district. So I would like to move through the other ones that we have actually something that we can compare to.
Are you suggesting we do this as like a homework assignment and then come back to the meeting for all of them?
For, well, Granite Avenue South. I'd like to try to go through a few more if we can. But Cheryl, I know you want to get to the Elliott Street Quarter, so I'm trying to move us along. And I think this is just, this is a more challenging one that I'd rather save for later until.
But I do, may I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
How we are addressing this, I think, needs to be consistent, whether it's Granite Ave South or you start talking about Milton Station. So, or you start talking about Elliott Street Quarter. Maybe what we should do is leave this character part, as you started to say.
Yeah.
But can we go down and see, like, if something's an easy piece, let's fill it in. Let's try and fill in the easy ones. If there's stuff that we think takes more discussion, then maybe that's the homework assignment. But at least maybe we'll find that there's a certain amount of this that we can easily all agree on.
I think it's just challenging because there's, nothing exists currently.
So like in, in the next category, for example.
All right.
Let's just say, like, the B category, there's nothing for this one that we're going to really. But we did fill in for Granite Ave North, but I think that would still be, require a lot of discussion here. But let's go to C then, for example, disincentivizing tear downs. Well, there's nothing to tear down here, right? So we can, can't we fill this one out, for example? So the existing land is single family, that's all. So the existing land is single family, that's a, that's a one, right? Or is it a five? It's a five, because.
It's a zone, single family?
Because it's not. Okay, since it's sing, it's.
Yeah, it's a single family.
It's zone, yeah.
It's A, zone day.
I would say NA, well.
NA.
NA maybe because it's zoned for that, but it's not being used as that, so.
Land is vacant.
Yes, five.
That's a five.
Where, where am I putting that? C2.
Line 18 is NA, line 19.
We're in section, we're in section C. Disincentivized tear downs is the, is the category.
Land is vacant gets a what? Five. Got that? And C1 was NA? All right, C3, existing value is high.
This is interesting, because I'm looking at the land is vacant under North, and we had it as a five, and we have the land is vacant here. So North, it's not vacant. And here, it is vacant.
Yeah, so that should have been.
A one?
That should have been a one.
Should have been a one on the North.
On North, and five on South.
Right. And since there's no building value here.
Wait, what, what was one and five, I'm sorry?
So, all right, under Granite Ave. North, line 19 should be a one. And then next to it on South should be a five, right? Existing building value is high, so there's no building value here.
That'd be one.
So it would be one. But shouldn't that really be a high score? Because if it was a, building value was high, you wouldn't.
Seems like everything is going to be a high score, and every place is going to be super duper derved.
So, yeah.
I say, that's NA then, because there's nothing there.
Yep, okay, I would agree.
And then, District has Parcels Under buildings Adequate Size, and that's NA2, right? So we're not, so, all right. Then, National Register. It's not a National Register, so it's a five, just like we did on North. Parcel sizes.
Five. Or D2, is that what?
Yeah, so.
I would say five on just those rest, D2 and D3.
Right, I'm sorry, yes. And then on the parcel sizes, it's really just, it's a parcel that's, parcel sizes are greater than five acres, or one, it's between one and five here? Looks like I have this already, it's one, one parcel's between one and five, one's greater than five. And that just got to the minimum lot, parcel size. So I think these are just filled in, they're not really a rated system. And then the next one. And the Fs take advantage of existing multifamily housing, so none of this really applies. Right, because there's no existing here.
Existing zoning.
So this would just.
This.
This is no, there's no exist, I had no for existing.
But there is existing zoning there. It would be a one.
Sorry, which one are we looking at?
F2?
F2, existing zoning is multifamily or mixed use.
They both would be, yeah. Or just no, no, those are.
Yeah, for now, just.
If your zoning is under, are these not fives? These are, are ones?
Well, I don't know, I think, I feel like I'm either losing track of this or we're changing how we're applying. I can see F1 being a, being a no, but wouldn't F2 be a one? It has zoning. It's not multifamily or mixed use, right? It's residential. So it should be, it should be the lowest possible score then.
It can be a, well.
That would be a one. F3, mixed use zoning process underway. Not really.
Instead of Ns, should it be zeros? Instead of Ns, should it be zero, just if we're adding things up?
Yeah, we are, we are using zero, I see zeros on it.
Well, that was just for parcel sizes, sorry. Where I filled those in, it was the parcel sizes, or there's zero parcels in that size.
Yeah, so zero is just no value.
So.
An N is no value, so we should either pick an N or a zero.
Well, I think, I think we're working with a scale of one to five, so it's, right?
Except for the parcel sizes.
Yeah, exactly, again, aside, right.
So an N, we'll stick with the Ns.
So if it's existing land use is multifamily or mixed use, if we're saying that that give, if it is, it gets a high number, then this instead of an N would be a one.
Right, that's, I see it that way, too.
So, so both F1 and F2 would be a one, right? And I guess we would need to rate North the same way, more consistently. And neither one of those are zoned that way either, so those would be ones, I guess.
Yep.
If you're doing it that way, right?
Mixed use zoning process underway.
This is, all of this is take advantage of existing multifamily. So there's like, none of these, the rest of these apply, right?
So they would all be ones?
Because this takes, there's no multifamily to take advantage of, right? So in both cases, instead of having, yeah, so both, in both columns, North and South, all of those would be ones, right? To be consistent.
Right.
Yep.
All right, okay. Then, Trolley. So it's a, a one, because it's not within a half mile, right? And it's within a mile, do we know if it's within a mile?
Um.
It probably is.
It's just over a half, I think, so I think it's within a mile, yes.
Right?
Of walking?
To go to the.
Or crow flies.
That's the crow flies.
It's the crow because of the wood, the half mile circle is drawn. So I would say that that would get a five for access to Trolley within one mile. It's actually better, because you can actually walk down Granite Ave. And then to Butler to get to Cedar Grove, not Butler, Cedar Grove.
Yeah, but I thought the walk down Granite was pretty tough. Remember, that came up a lot. So I don't know if that gets a five, maybe it's like a three.
A three, okay.
Three on that, yeah. Same three.
Access to Trolley Greater, so that doesn't apply. And bus line, there is a bus line on, actually, on both of these, we should say there's a bus line within a half a mile. So I think that gets a five for both of these, North and South.
Where's the bus line?
I'm sorry, what was, what was three again? That was a.
Within one mile. Access to Trolley within one mile.
G2.
G2 was a three.
Okay, and what was G3?
An N.
Yeah, it just doesn't apply.
Okay, yep, all right, I'm just sorry.
If you covered it above.
Access to bike path.
What do we do on, what do we say on the bus line?
Well, both North and South have access to a bus line on Granite Ave.
So the, the stop would be right there?
On Granite Ave, yeah.
Yeah, that's, sounds like a five to me.
And then bike path within a half a mile.
The whole five.
There is a bike path there.
Yeah, it's a great bike path.
But for Granite Ave. South, it's more than a half a mile.
Okay, so that would be a one.
So I would say a one for the South. North, we gave a five because it is right there.
Right.
Access to sidewalks.
That's a one, that's not.
Well, you can go into East Milton on the sidewalk, but you can't go the other way very easily. So I'd say you give it a.
Is there a sidewalk on that side of the road?
Yeah.
There is?
The sidewalk on one side is really fast traffic, it's like walking down 28.
Isn't it on both sides?
I don't think so.
I don't think so, I don't think it's on the American Legion side.
It's on the golf course side. They've just recently improved the sidewalk on the golf course.
Right, yeah.
But there's not one at the DPW and the Heritage Hall, I don't think, in that stretch, anyway.
I'm pretty sure there is.
I think there is one.
I think there is one.
I think it's on both sides.
It's not all that safe, because it's right on the road, but it's there.
I think if North gets a three, South gets a three.
Yeah, I think so, too. Access to school, that's a one. Access to amenities, I think if North gets a three, this gets a three, because you can get to East Milton from this one.
Yeah, but East Milton is farther away than Adams Villages.
Yeah, two. And then another two for South? For the access to amenities within one mile?
Yeah, two's okay.
Wait, let's find out.
And while we're here on this, Granite Ave. North, I, on our sheets, we have G2, G3, G4, empty, two, three, four. Did we score those while we were going through this? Or do you want to go back and fill those in now?
I have, because you have G1 is filled in, G2 and 3 don't apply, right? Because it's just distance for the trolley.
Okay, I thought we.
So.
So what did we just do on South? G1?
Three.
Well, because it's not within a half mile, then we looked at within a mile.
Yeah, so I guess what we could do is an NA for G1, so that the three is the one that applies, right? That's to be consistent.
Okay.
You see?
Yeah, that's what I had, three and three.
Okay.
But then I had not apply for, for G3.
Yeah, that was for South. And what do you have, G3 on the North side?
Not apply, because really, G1, 2, and 3, only one of them should apply, right? So on North, I have G1 being a five, and then I have, on South, G2 being a three. And then otherwise, in those three lines, I have not applicable, right?
Does that sound good?
I think we'll have to go back and look at it once we go run down. But then, that was the end of the original guiding principles. Then we had this idea not to lose business opportunity.
Where do we land on with amenities within one mile?
A two, I thought.
Was that a two?
So you can, you can, so it's a 1.1 mile walk to Playa Bowls, which means it's probably less than a mile to the cleaners or to the fruit center, so.
All right, so we give it a three.
Or stick with two.
Well, we gave, we gave North a three, so I think consistency would be a three.
We gave North a three because of, because of the Dorchester side, right?
Yeah, but not the Milton side. This one, it would be the Milton side, not the Dorchester side, because of the highway.
Okay. All right, mixed use required.
Yes.
Well.
I would think.
Was it?
Shouldn't it?
It's allowed, right? For North, we, we put a five because it's allowed. So would we be consistent here? It's allowed here, too.
Yeah, not required, so one and five?
I think five, yeah, and NA above it, right? Because these are kind of like one or the other.
Yeah.
So now we get at the affordable housing potential. So the density allows more than 10 units per parcel, so this is also a five.
Yep.
And then we had not applicable for the next three on North. I think they all apply here as well. Then we get to the roadway. Sorry, Meredith, I jumped in, you were doing. Are you okay? All right, so again, here, it's one or the other, so J1 for North and South is not applicable. And J2 is, the consistency would also be a five, because it's four lane. And then, I think we, J3 in terms of the parcel frontage on state roadway that has a study for improvements, it would be the same as for North, right? A four. The hotspot, the same as a three. And then, a not applicable on the traffic studies that are not part of the state, right?
See, I would say this is a different on J4, because the reason why we gave this a three is because Granite Avenue North goes out a different direction to Galvin Boulevard, it doesn't go into Granite Avenue. I would say this parcel dumps on, would come out on Granite Avenue, which would be, I think, a hotspot, I think that would be.
So you should be lower.
I think that'd be a one.
A one, all right, a one.
And then if you look at the one above, so J3.
Road is identified as a traffic hotspot, wouldn't that be a five?
Well, that's where the, that's where this numbering, yeah, I mean, five, five would indicate that it's absolutely a hotspot, one, you know what I mean? This is where it's.
All right, so five.
So I would say five on J4, where three has a different access.
But in this, but in that case, the five would be negative. I would think a hotspot would be negative.
I know, that's, that's.
A hotspot is negative, that's why one.
Oh, okay, sorry.
You have to reverse it there.
I'm thinking yes is the highest, it's the most. Well, I, I think ultimately, like, if you're giving scores here, the thought is you add them up, and the best one is the most points. So if something is bad.
Give it a one.
You should give it a low score.
Right.
Yeah.
All right.
I actually have been doing that differently, because it's, I.
Well, we can run back through them.
The best score would be the highest score.
Yeah, the problem is, it's not always, it's, you know?
I know.
So there's some subjectivity here as well.
I think we can kind of run back through these North and South, too, if you want, before we do the others. But on the, on the FEMA, a one, because that's bad, right? It's in a, it's in, it's in these flood zones. All right, so should we start at the top and just look at these to see if, again, if these are?
If we've been consistent?
If we've been consistent, yeah.
Yeah, because the numbering is just different. Usually, if it's the best, we do one, like.
Yeah, but you want to get the most points, right?
But it's correct, yeah, so unless you get the least points, but.
So let's do North and South together, just as a review, does that make sense?
Let's decide if we're playing golf or football.
That's a, this is a. All right, so allowed height is comparable to existing in district. For Granite, North, we gave a five because it's the same as what's there. So that's right, that gets a high point, right? And we gave Granite Ave. South a two, because of the single-family neighborhood and the single-family zone. So that's a low score, so that's consistent, right? Then, on North, we have NA, which we should probably consider changing on the next one. Allowed height is comparable to existing multifamily. We could say it actually is, right? It's a five there.
If we're going to have a five for South, we should have a five for North, I think.
Yeah. And then on the allowed building size, it's, we say it's comparable to existing, because it is, for North. And for South, we gave it a one.
Can you, can you go back? I'm, I've lost the thread a little bit.
A2, yeah. Okay, so we're on line six, which is A4, I mean, A3.
What, what do we, what did we do for A2?
We have five for North and South.
Those jumped up to fives. I'm sorry, why did that happen?
Because I thought we had it as an N, didn't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, how did those get fives? How did A2 just get to fives?
To make it consistent from North and South, the way we're treating them? I'm sorry, this is back to that thing that we were before.
Yeah.
Maybe we should just color these N's to come back to these three or four.
I think so, because it's.
All right, I'm just going to highlight these as.
It depends on how you look at it.
Yellow to come back to them. All right, let's keep going back down then. For this, do not exceed the requirements in the statute.
Section, okay, section B, yeah.
Section B. We have, we filled in these numbers on north, but we haven't filled them in on south. So, the density that you can do here can meet the 15, so I think is why we did a 5 for north.
Mm-hmm.
So, would we treat south the same?
Mm-hmm.
Who is in south zone residential?
It's what, we're evaluating the article, what was...
Yeah, the zoning.
The zoning in the article.
Not exceeding the requirements of the statute. I mean, this one, again, for the, I mean, the, maybe these 2 for the unit capacity and the density, we should highlight and come back to as well. But on the next one, what I would say is, on the lot, on the parcel size, meeting the minimum sub-district size, we gave north a 3 because it doesn't stand alone, but the south would stand alone on its own. So it does, it is 5 acres, so I would give it a 5 because it meets that criteria.
And then you need to think that eventually, when you get to some other sub-districts, they're going to get low scores on this because they don't amount to 15 units per acre average. So that's where the balance comes from.
So, so, so Tim, we should give 5s then, like we did on, for south here, like we did on north, on that logic? For, um, D1 and 2?
Yeah, and, and, and I mean, I, I think you should, you know, keep, keep in the back of your mind as you're going along here, um, you know, with other sub-districts, that, you know, ultimately, you know, if, if, if the, if the criterias do not exceed the requirements in the statute and guidelines, you know, Article 1 kind of gets pretty close, you know, to, to unit capacity and, and acreage. You know, so again, you know, these are going to get 5s, LE Street's going to get 1s. And so, you know, just, yeah, keep that back in mind.
Yeah, so I'd say, yeah, so we would have, so you have, for north, it's a 5, south a 5 for density. For unit capacity, north and south, 5. For sub-district size, a 3 for Granite Ave. and a 5, I mean, for north, and a 5 for south.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
I would agree.
Okay. Disincentivize, tear down, existing land use is single-family. We have a 5 for north.
Yep, and NA for south.
That should be a 1, right?
But I think it should, it's not, the land use isn't single-family, so I don't think it should be a 1. But the, you're saying the zoning is single-family, so I would say it could be like a 3, so it's somewhere in between.
Okay.
I, I think if your goal is to not tear down single-family houses...
Yeah.
Existing land use being single-family is bad, and existing land use not being single-family is good.
So then it should be a 5.
Right, and again, you've got single-family districts elsewhere that are going to get low scores on this because redeveloping them, you know, puts single-family homes at risk.
Right, right. Okay, so, because this is disincentivizing tear downs, right? There's nothing to tear down in terms of single families here, right? That makes sense. All right, so land is vacant.
5.
A 5.
And 1 north.
And 1 on north, right. Existing building value is high. So we gave this a medium because of the value of office buildings in the current marketplace. There's really no value in some ways to the current... So there's some value to it, as I suppose, the way it's zoned, but I don't think it's necessarily considered high. Tim, what would you think for this one, for existing building value is high, would you?
So if, if the...
It might be land value.
If the building value is high, you're less likely to tear it down. And if it's low, you're more likely to tear it down.
That's why I think it's NA, because there's...
Right, because, because also, like, it's not a single-family house in the first place, so...
Yeah, yeah, so it's an NA here.
C4, we had 5 for north.
District property. Yeah, because it does have that, and this one doesn't have it, so NA. I mean, this could be 1s or NA, so I don't know. Should we give it a 1 rather than an NA?
Well, are we going to do, so then the 1 above it, C3 should also be a 1, right, instead of an NA?
Yeah.
Are we going to get rid?
Yeah, that's what I was kind of thinking, because we have a number next to them on the 1 on north. All right. So then we go to the, avoid rezoning historic districts and parcels with historic structures.
Come back, if you don't mind, to C.
Oh, sure.
How did we score C4 and C3? NAs or 1s?
We put them back in 1s.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and then, the historic districts, we put them at 5s, right?
Because it does not, right?
Right, because they're not in historic districts, so it's not historic structure. The next one is purely the parcel sizes within the district, right? So it's not really a ranking, it's just a, you know? We can track the parcel sizes. Uh, because there was zone larger, non-residential. And you could look at this, zone larger, non-residential parcels to prevent displacement. So we could get a cat, we could give it a category, like, under, just E, where the blue is. We could say, these are larger parcels, so these should, these could get 5s. And, and it would be treated differently than this, how many parcels there are. So if we had, like, um, either an E point, E.9, Tim? An E.9 would just be the rating based on this particular criteria, zoning larger parcels, then these would get 5s.
Parcel is large?
Yeah, well, look at the, look at what it says.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Zone larger, non-residential parcels to prevent displacement and minimize impacts. Nobody's getting displaced on these 2 parcels. They're larger parcels.
Yep, so there would be 5s.
Well, you're displacing businesses, but, you know, throughout the whole, but is it a 5-story structure?
On, um...
North?
On north, so you're displacing 5 stories of business use.
Only if they choose to do it, right?
That's, but that's all of this.
That's everything, yeah. I mean, all right, so, well, I think everyone was thinking residential before, but maybe you don't think that's a...
No, I don't, it just, it doesn't, if, then it needs to say, just residential displacement.
Yeah, true.
Well, I, I think that's implicit when we say non-residential parcels to prevent displacement of residential.
True, true, yeah.
You know, whatever, so...
Yeah.
I mean, it's a worthwhile point, though, I mean, you know, it's, it, it does speak to, there's something here. It's not nothing.
Right, right. So, I mean, you could give it a 4 on, on north. Something besides the 5, Maggie.
Yeah, no, I don't know if I have an opinion, it's just a point.
All right, so then...
Would E8 be a number instead of a Y?
Right, correct. That was my question, too.
Oh, all right.
No.
Yeah, so maybe that's where it comes in, instead of an E.9, right? Yeah, I think it could be done E, E.8, you're right.
So what...
So instead of a Y, put in a 5. I think we did that for north, right?
Yeah. And then make a 9.
And what, what do we want to do with 9?
Just get rid of it.
No 9, we don't need a 9.
No 9. Because we're using 8 for it.
The less, the better.
And then Fs take advantage of existing multifamily housing.
We previously said 1s through all of these, for both north and south, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Because it's not existing multifamily. And then site districts in transit and amenity-rich areas. We already talked about why we have the NAs there. And these numbers, I think these numbers are all still good, do you? And then, then do not lose the business use opportunity and encourage mixed use. 2, 5, so the mixed use allowed, makes sense. The affordable housing potential, 1.1, both 5s, and then the rest are not applicable, right?
Yep.
And then, the potential to handle vehicle traffic, the 2, the 1, J.1, 2, 2-lane road, both are NA. 4-lane road, both are 5s. Frontage on state roadway, both are 4s. Road identified as traffic hotspot, north is 3 because you can go the other way. And south is...
What do we say?
1.
1, because you're going to get a low score, right? Then both are not applicable on J5 and flood risk, they're both 1s. So really, what we have to come back to are at the top on the height, right?
So if you added those up, can we do a, a sample?
Where do we go with this, I guess, is the next question, right?
If we, if we added it up, what districts, how did the districts score?
What we're going to find are trade-offs. We're going to say that, you know, some districts score high in some areas and some score high in other areas.
So if you do, yeah.
And then it's useful for, I think, as, as we go about thinking about new districts, that, um, we decide, you know, which of those are most important. Or in some of them, it might be, you know, what's the trade-off? If you do this here, you might have to do this there, right? Like, lower density someplace, higher density someplace. Or, you know, if it's not 5 acres, you have to combine it with another dis, with another piece of property so you can get 5 acres.
So we're not taking the total number and applying that somewhere. We're still going through the list, anyway, when we analyze a new district.
I think so.
Is that what I'm seeing?
Yeah, that's right. So, I mean, we can look at the total numbers, but I don't see that's going to tell us, yeah, this is what the best one, and this is not the best.
So we're not scoring it, so I shouldn't be summing it up?
I think, I mean, we're going through, we're going through criteria. We're evaluating for each criteria, it's somewhere between a 1 and a 5, or it's not applicable. We will end up with a total. We have 7 districts, we really have 10. We have 7 plus 3 others, you know, that, that are, that are added to it. I, I think to say that we're not going to come up with a conclusion where the higher the score, the more suitable that district is based on this criteria would be wrong, right? You will. You're, you're going to, you know, the higher scores are going to be... Yeah, they're going to be the districts that we were able to achieve more successfully the criteria that we outlined. I mean, yeah, that'll be the result of it.
So just right now, I just totaled up the 2, and, um, north has a score of 140, and south has a score of 111.
But even if south came in at 200, would we ever put 530 units there?
Well, I, I think, one way to think about this is that, what I think this scorecard is going to be especially useful for is evaluating new districts. Because if you believe that these are all the things that a district should be, you're going to want to create a new district that has the highest possible score, right? I, I think that the other way to think about it is with these existing districts, and, and I don't think there's any avoiding, you know, using some of these districts in some form, although you will have to make them a little bit different, maybe a lot of it different, you know, because you can't bring the same article back to town meeting. You know, ultimately, and I think, Jim, this is the tension that you're experiencing, is you're probably going to find that these existing districts are going to score pretty high, and then how do you reconcile that with, you know, for lack of a better term, the politics of the issue? Which we know that people don't want this many units on Granite Ave. So that's where, Jim, I, I think the kind of subjective analysis comes in with, you know, okay, you know, this analysis gave us a number, but we also know from other forms of data that we have that the number's not consistent with what, you know, is, is going to fly, you know, with, with people in town. And so that, that's where kind of that subjective analysis comes in.
Right.
So can I just, do you guys want to come back to, uh, uh, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, and hopefully, we don't need the number of units that require us to, you know, to...
Yeah, that's the hope, but unfortunately, we have to hedge and do a little bit of everything.
Yeah, we have to plan.
Do we just dive into other districts and give it to UTIL and see what it looks like?
But I think the criteria is important because...
Yeah, I do, too.
But, you know, we have to have a logic for picking other places. And if the logic is, we want to spread it out more, then we also have to understand, like, we know that there's some, if we add more land area with, and we're lowering density, we're not going to hit 15 units an acre, so...
Yeah, that's where UTIL comes in. Would they tell us that, though?
Well, we already know it from UTIL's work before, but, yeah, they would tell us that.
With new districts, we have, we don't know it. Like, like a, a deep look at Fuller Village, or a deep look at the DPW yard in Milton, our DPW yard, or just other areas.
Well, these were looked at before, and that's what we learned before, Jim, but, you know, I think it's... But, you know, um, the DPW, they can't do because the town hasn't declared it on the surface. But I think running through all that to kind of refresh what we've already looked at will be important at some point. But this idea, I think, and Tim, I mean, you can, maybe if you want to add or explain differently than I have, but at some point, you know, we're still going to need to average out to 15 units an acre for the, for the rapid transit one, right? The problem that we were having is some districts, the land area was too high, which was driving the density down.
Yeah, I get it.
Right, Tim? So...
That's correct.
Yeah, so, you know, I think that's just going to be our, um, challenge, still, just like it was before.
So you're saying we're going to look in this, at the same districts and just adjust the density in different districts, or...
Well, no, I think, you know, one way to think about it is, we might have to replace districts that have comparable land area, because I don't think we can just add land and lower density and still hit 15, that, from what we did before. And, but I think it's useful to understand, because when we say, like, take a district away and add a district, we need to, to, to score that district against something, too, right? So that when the public, you know, is looking at, why did you pick that district? We can go and explain how we arrived at everything, and it wouldn't just be because we, we just, we picked it out of, you know, just a random idea. It, it has a, a logic behind it.
You know what would be helpful also is to look at what the state, what towns of the rapid transit the state has approved. So the towns have submitted their plans, and the state has approved them. You know, I think Brookline, they've approved, Newton, they've approved. And it'd be interesting to see of those towns, like Brookline, look at their, their net new compared to what the state told them they needed to be built. So I believe if you looked at...
You mean zone for?
Zone for, what they need, correct, what they needed to be zoned for. So it's interesting, because I might have my percentage wrong, because I haven't looked at it recently, but I think Brookline had, like, 8,000 they needed to zone for, and their plan only produced, like, 22% or, it was either 14 or 22%.
It's all about zoning, and that's part, part of the problem. This is all about zoning, it's not about building required net new.
Right, so we could, we should be looking at, if that's, the state is saying, okay, we're stamping and approving these plans that have a low percentage of zoning, then maybe that's another way we should be looking at this. To Jim's point, where he's always pushing for full... To Jim's point where he's always pushing for Fuller Village, we should look to see if that can get added to our area, our districts, and it's not going to actually, you know, get built.
Paper compliance.
Yeah, we can be paper compliance because that's what these other towns are doing. And they're getting approved by the state. So why should we be reinventing the wheel a little bit?
Well, we can talk about that when we come to new districts. What I would suggest, could we, because I think it will be much easier to move through... I was going to say Milton Station. Do we want to do one more district?
Do we have, though, as we do Milton Station, do we have an agreement on how we're scoring these on this number one? Are we going to just kind of keep that one, or A, rather? Are we going to come back to A for all of them? Because we kind of just highlighted A.
I think this will be much easier, I think we could do A in this one, on Milton Station East.
So you're saying A4 and A5 we're looking at?
Okay, so Milton Station...
I think it's much...
You'd want to do east or west?
East. I'm just sort of, because we're starting from east moving west, so I thought this would be the next.
All right, so Milton Station East allows six stories. And that's what 88 Wharf is.
So you've got to expand.
But we only have one Milton Station here, sorry. Do you want to add a...
I don't know where it is.
Do you want to add a column?
Just draw a line down the middle.
Draw a line down the middle, right, okay.
Okay, because I have the, I have...
You have two on your...
I have the Milton Station East and then I have the Bridge.
There's Bridge and then there's West.
And I think they are all distinctive.
All right, so you actually need three.
So we need to add...
We could do Milton Station East and then for the next meeting, add categories for...
All right, so right now, we're just doing, just doing east, you said?
They have different heights.
Okay, so we're going to just call this east for now, and we're going to add.
And then we'll get this spreadsheet at the end of the day, right? Updated tomorrow or something?
Because I think they're distinctly different in different heights.
All right, so we're doing east.
Yep.
So east...
Extra space storage, 88 Wharf, and the muscle and flow mill building.
Are you sure that's not Bridge?
Nope, Milton Hill House is Bridge.
Okay.
Correct him, is that...
Yeah, the two, the two, the old and the new Milton Hill House are the Bridge District. One, Adam Street is part of the East District.
All right.
So it's just those three buildings?
And that's the Wharf property.
That one to Adam Street, I think it also covers the MBTA lot.
Yeah. Looks like it covers the Wharf. All right, so that allows six stories, 75 feet, 40 units an acre.
So I give that a five.
And... 40% open space. So height, we're giving it a five. All the way down? Wait, let's see, five, five, five. Allowed typology is comparable to existing. This allows mixed use?
Let's say allowed height is comparable to existing in other parts of town. This is actually much higher than other parts of town, I mean, not much higher, but six stories is the highest. Most are four stories.
So give it a three, then? Do you want to be sort of neutral that way?
Yeah, okay.
And then, I think then you'd have to do size the same thing, a three, because the height's allowing you a certain size. The typology is comparable to existing in terms of mixed use, right? So, or, is this, this isn't, is this the mixed use mandatory?
I think so.
Yeah, so then it gets the five. The open space, I'd say it gets the five. And there's not significant tree coverage, which gets a five.
Mm-hmm, I would agree.
So we have two threes and the rest fives. Then under B, density per acre, this would also be a five. Unit capacity would be a five, and sub-district size would be a five, right?
You know what, I, sorry, can I go back to A6? Required open space is comparable to existing. You know, 88 Wharf has a lot of open space down there.
You think it's more than 40%?
On that building, it might be.
Let me see if I have it on my chart from before.
It's hard to recognize where the property ends, you know?
There's a park, there's a park, it's town, no.
All right, then let's give it comparable because other buildings have less...
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think I have that.
So we're holding a five there?
We can keep a five there, yeah.
All right, so... Disincentivizing teardowns, so on the existing land use is single-family, we put a five rather than an N, right?
Did we run fives through the B category?
Yep.
Land is vacant, that's not true, so we put a one for that.
What did we do for C1?
A five. The C2 is one, though. Or maybe, I mean, extra space is not vacant. I kind of almost think of storage as kind of vacant, but they do pay high tax. I give that a one, what do you think about that?
I think it is. Building value is high?
No, the land is vacant.
It has to be a one, there's a building there. As much as you want it to not be there.
Existing building value is high, I would give that, I'd say that, those are...
A five?
I'd just be putting a five all day long.
Wait, no, that means you're giving it a lot of points, right?
Because that value, that building's worth a lot of stuff.
I know, that means you should have a lower number.
No, we decide, if we want to disincentivize teardowns, the high building value is good because you won't tear down a high-value building.
Right.
Okay. So we set a five, then, okay. All right. And then the adequate size without demolition, hmm?
I would say five, extra space storage has, or four, there's a big lot.
I mean, yeah, because there's space for addition there, isn't it? Keep the building and add to it.
Yeah, I'm not sure I'd give it a five, though, because I might give it a four.
And I'm also thinking the mill buildings that have adequate size to allow additional units without, so you can, it has the capacity to increase the number of units without demolishing it. Like, it's such a big building that it would be, obviously JD Wild knows that, you know...
Yeah.
It's large enough that he could optimize in converting that to condos, so...
I think that would be a five.
Okay.
Wouldn't it?
Yeah.
A five. Historic. Well, now these are going to get low because these are, there's historic buildings here. So I would say, is it a National Register Historic? Yes, so it's a one.
Is it a National Register or is it just a landmark?
The National Register.
There's National Register.
Oh, the district, okay.
Meredith, is the village on the National Register?
Yes.
Is it on the State Register?
It's, it's not a local historic district, but it's been surveyed for mass historic, but it's...
It's definitely national.
It's, the, yeah, the designation is a National Register district.
It's not the whole village, but the Webb Mill Building is part of the Baker Chalk...
Yeah, I know, like, almost, yeah, I know most all the buildings, too, are like, on at least the State Register.
Yeah, the Webb Mill and the, and the extra space storage, but then, you know, 88 Wharf's not, and neither is the MBTA lot, so maybe...
No, so those...
So maybe you give it a three, because some are and some aren't.
Yeah, probably the best thing to do.
Yeah, so a three.
Yeah, that's...
And we don't have, I mean, I just think on the local historic, this was just in case we got one approved by now. So I just don't think that gets anything. We just, although we put it five.
But we gave scores on Granite Ave.
We gave scores on the other, so give a five here, too, to be consistent, yep.
Wait.
Yeah, hold on, that's, because it does not include a local historic district.
I know we refer to fact of further study, but if there's ever going to be a local historic district, it's going to be here. So, you know, it's not there today, but there's likely...
All right, let's give it a one. Give it a one. And then the existing land use is non-residential, that's mixed here. Some of it is non-residential and some of it is residential, some of it's mixed use. So what do we score that? Three? Four? I'd say four, most of it's non-residential.
So all of them an E, four?
No.
No, just, just the last one.
Can I make a recommendation, just to make this a little easier? Is it possible to carve out E1 through E7 and just pull it out and put it at the very bottom? Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Just so everything else is going to be an addition?
Yeah, just, I'd say for now, if everybody can just highlight E8 as being the numerical one.
That's the only one, yeah. The rest of it is just data.
Yeah.
And so what's E8?
Four.
Four.
Four, yeah.
So take advantage of multifamily housing.
Existing land use is multifamily or mixed use, so that's kind of some of it is and some of it isn't, right?
Exactly, because there's two stories, the two, there's two buildings on side of extra space storage in 88 Wharf.
So let's do that a three, Ethan?
Yep.
A three, okay.
So these are, these are not going to have a yes, no, right?
Correct, we're changing that, yeah. So we gave them all ones on the other one, but here, existing zoning is the zoning. So we have overlays here, so I'd say we can give this a five, since we have the overlay. Mixed use zoning is processed well, no, because we already have it, so I'm not sure what we do about that.
One?
Yeah, I guess, yeah. Density level matches existing, I'd say that's probably a five. Dimensional standards match existing, another five. Design guidelines in place, that's a five. Includes approved multifamily project not yet built, that's a, I'd say a one. Access to trolley within a half mile, that's a five. Then NA. NA. And the bus line. Is there a bus line that runs there, too, Tim?
Yeah, you can pick up the 240 on the Dorchester side.
Okay, five, then.
Wait, but not on the Milton side?
Yeah, but you can walk across the bridge.
Within a half a mile.
We're taking a minute to be able to walk into Dorchester, too.
From here?
I mean, it's, it's kind of, you know, depending...
We're here.
Crossed on the river.
So we're crossing, yeah, okay.
Just crossing the river to get the bus.
I mean, I might, I might give that a four rather than a five, just because it's a little bit of a hike.
Okay, four. Bike path is definitely a five, it's right there.
So, I'm sorry, we were on the bus, we were a four?
Bus run a four.
Yeah.
Bike path, five.
Yeah.
Sidewalks, sidewalks a five.
Five, yeah.
School within a half mile, that's not true.
That'd be a one.
That's a one. Amenities is a five. And then, within a mile, within a mile, we have it within a half a mile, so I don't know, how do we do that one?
Well, what do we do on the others? We gave the others...
Tim, I'm just wondering, Glover School. Because you're right, you're just up Canton Ave.
Eh, that's more than a half a mile.
More than a half mile, yeah.
Certainly, yeah.
I think just to be consistent, when you look at these, access to amenities within a half mile and within a mile, on north and south Granite Ave, we scored both of them. So we should probably score, well, what do you think?
So within a mile, I'd say there's less within a mile than there is within a half a mile. Because you're going to, all right, so like... I don't know, like, I guess, how do you read it?
I mean, it doesn't seem like you could give it a five for the, within a half mile, and then also five within a mile, would you?
No. Because what are you adding with that, with that extra half a mile? Nothing.
Well, if you go into Dorchester, go up D'Av.
But I guess theoretically, if you had the amenities within a half mile...
Don't get carried much, though.
Yodork.
If you had the...
Taco.
Yeah.
That's within a half mile, though.
Ice cream, scat.
I love the neighborhood. If you had, if you had the amenities within a half mile, it doesn't matter if it's within a mile, because, you know what I mean?
I would say it's very amenity-rich, I would...
It is, but if you give it a five, is access to amenities within a mile, is it even applicable? Or is it that an NA?
It would be the same.
Only if there were more amenities within that extra half mile.
I think of that, I think of that half a mile, you end up getting, once you get to CVS, then you get to the church and the hospital. I don't think you, I don't think you get much more in the mile.
No.
No, you do, because you get to Ashmont in a mile from 1 Adam Street.
Okay, so you're saying it's a five?
Nah, I'd give it like a three or a four.
I'd say a four or three, yeah, I'm with you.
So, so just philosophically, are we going to score both of these for every one of the districts? We are, okay.
Yeah, I think so, I think Jim's right on that, so...
So within a mile, we did a four, if it's within a mile?
Three or a four, only because this kind of, after the half mile, there's really not much, until you get to Ashmont, which is the mile, so...
I was thinking walking up to Central Ave. Like Central Ave, then you can go to get your hair done, you can go to the little gift shop that just opened, El Barrio.
Get food, there's no food.
Then we give it a four.
Four.
That's, that's still within, that's still within the half mile.
That's within a half mile.
That contributes to the five.
Yeah, the mile is Dorchester.
I think it's just Dorchester, then, so...
All right, so let's do with the half...
So a three.
I think we should rate it.
I think it's a three, because there's a lot in between, there's not any amenity between. Once you pass the CVS there.
I think there's a, all right, four.
Which one are you on a four on?
G8 or 5?
Five, five.
Okay, good, that's, all right, and then three.
Three on the other one, yeah.
And then mixed use required, well, it's not required, it is required, yes. So it's a five, and then an NA, right? And then the density allows more than 10 units an acre, so that's a five. And then the rest of these would also be, district includes existing, affordable does, because, you know, 88 Wharf doesn't have any...
What about Milton Hill, nothing?
So this is a...
That's a one, isn't it?
The one. District includes unbuilt approved 40Bs.
No.
We did the others as what here, we did these as NAs.
Yeah.
Okay, so they're runs not ones?
I think they need to be NAs to be consistent.
Or we go back and rank the other two.
Or we go back, yeah.
Potential to handle traffic, that's, it does, the parcel frontage is on a two-lane road.
Well, it's not a four-lane road.
No, so that's NA, so...
So that's NA.
But it's not well-equipped to handle a lot of traffic.
I don't think it's well-equipped to handle a lot of traffic.
Yeah, I would say three. It's really narrow type.
Parcel frontage is not on a state roadway, so that's a one. I don't remember about the hotspots here.
I would say this backs up.
It definitely backs up.
That's up pretty good.
And Adam Street, Adam Street is definitely a hotspot, in the morning, Canton Ave, Randolph Ave.
There are traffic studies that were done in the zoning for, and some of the recommendations had to do with the signals, but... So, I guess in some ways, that's a benefit, right? That we already know about some improvements that should be made here, so we could give it some number.
I would say three, maybe, in that.
Yeah, I agree, no more than three.
Which, which one is that?
J5.
What do we do on J4? What do we do on J4?
One.
And then J5, we're going to do a three or a four?
A three?
And then I would think that these are also flood, flood area.
It is, there is a...
Yeah, I would think both of them, these are ones.
Although extra space, I think it's not probably...
Tim, can you pull that up, is extra space in the flood zone?
88 wharf is really the primary in the parking lot there?
I can't imagine they're not, but maybe extra space gets high enough, but Webb Mill is low, it's right back at the river.
What do we do on J1?
Three.
A three.
So this is... This is it, so you've got portions of extra space that are in it and portions of Webb Mill that are in it, but...
So they get more than a one then? So I think those get higher than a one then.
I, I would give that a three, because I think you've got significant amounts of development area that are out.
So that's K1 and K2?
Yes.
Yeah, I agree. Oh, look at us, we did it.
Well, so I just totaled that, so according to our score sheet...
I'm going to guess, 62.
136. So that is less desirable. That's my missed in number.
No, just have to look and at the, all of those things again. Remember, North has...
And Granite Ave North is more desirable...
Yeah.
On our scorecard, by four points.
But it makes sense, it's still significantly more desirable than South. South was 111.
Yep.
I think we go through and look at them again after we go through all of them, but I, I do think it's, it is interesting to see how they...
Yeah, I, I would have guessed it would have been higher than Granite Ave.
I think those historic numbers are really throwing you for a loop.
So, it is almost 10 o'clock and what I was thinking, if, this seems like a good stopping point here, but that we, we add the categories to the spreadsheet for Milton Station East and Milton Station Bridge, but then when we come back, we start with Elliott Street Corridor, so we can, you can do that.
I know what I said earlier, Meredith, I really want to get to it and I do, but I do think that these should go faster now.
They will, yeah.
So, you know, if you want to finish these first...
You're okay to move from east to west?
Yeah, thanks for, I'm just trying to accommodate my request, yeah.
No, I know, because I, but I think these will go much faster.
But I do think it makes sense to try and, and finish these up.
That's why I was trying to sort of jump over the Granite Avenue South, because I knew this, these would be more consistent and we'd have something more measurable to compare.
I think Bridge and West will be similar to East, they won't take a lot. And then that leaves us, and Matapan, I think also, because it's similar that way. I think it's the Parkway and Elliott Street that also might take a little bit of discussion.
I agree.
But if we can do those in an hour and then we have, I don't, we'll have, I don't know how many other things are planned to be on the...
By the way, the, the driver of the difference between North, it, it's all in Section F. Take advantage of existing multifamily housing. Milton Station is a 27. Granite Ave North is a 7. That's, it's, it all comes down to that category, there's a 20-point difference in that category alone.
So that, yeah.
Well, because we didn't rate high some of the things about zoning for parcels that don't have uses, you know, Granite Ave, I mean, that's, you know, part of the Granite Ave was, there's no multifamily there, but it could take multifamily, right?
Yeah, that, that particular section, we, we have a score of one for every one of those seven criteria, so...
But they should be, they should be higher on something like taking advantage of land that has open, that's open, it's non-residential, right? And the Elliott Street, I mean, Milton should be lower there.
It, it, we may have to go back afterwards and just make sure that we were equitable in terms of how we scored. I mean, it, it may, we may go back now and rethink some of these scores to make sure that anyhow.
But one thing that'll be interesting is you say, well, okay, if you do a different Randolph Ave, how does that score compare to some of, to the districts that were here?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so, we're at 10 o'clock and I, I think it's a good place to stop and...
Meredith, can I just ask on the cut and fill? I think at one point, you and I said that we might try and find some time to look at that.
Yeah.
I pulled out my folder from a few years ago, do you want to try and look at what Tim sent out and maybe you and I can have a conversation about it?
That would be great, I was hoping that would be the case, that, yeah.
All right, so, I think that, that might be a way to move it along.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then in comparison to our own, what we currently have?
Yes, right.
Is important to look at and...
Yeah, there was some work that we started a few years ago, I wanted to have a chance to look back over it. We have a new building commissioner now and Joe Prandak had been advising a bit before. So, because our, our bar law, he had, had said that, you know, at times it's hard to enforce what we have on the cut.
Right.
Yeah, this is, Tim noted this in his, in his notes, but I think that alternatives analysis is really interesting. I want to think a little bit more about that. I, I like that.
You know, and the trigger, our trigger, it's huge. It's a huge amount of cubic feet, like, before it's even triggered to have to do a permit for.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think that's something to think about too.
The 1,000 yards, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, you, you think bringing it to a lower, yeah, yeah.
Is a threshold a little...
Yeah, it's good to understand what a 1,000 yards is.
I modeled that from my own understanding, it's like, whoa, that's a lot of, I mean, I redimensioned that, I meant.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if we could do that.
Yeah, that's great.
Well, the other thing, I thought it was odd, they had sound in their, and sound is regulated by the Board of Health, so it's interesting that they have that in here.
Well, you, you got all of Section 7 though, you know, I mean, that was, you don't, you don't need all of that.
No, 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 but that's under earth removal and fill, one of the, under their...
Definitions?
Definitions.
Yeah.
So I thought that was kind of interesting.
Like blasting is something that's come up before in terms of noise and vibration, I don't, I have to look at that again.
Yeah, but that's still under Board of Health, not...
Yeah.
Like the nuisance, sound nuisance.
Okay.
Because Central Ave has been unbelievable.
Yeah, everywhere.
It's like, I feel so badly for the neighbors, yeah.
I still feel like that subdivision off of Pleasant, you know, it's like, anyway...
And that went on for a long time.
That particular neighbor on the front there, I, you know, I, that, there was a neighbor that came, he said if you're going in, the first new one on the left, the neighbor on that side there came to all the meetings and very concerned about the construction impacts and, you know, it met on paper requirements for a subdivision and you don't even get to see the detailed layouts, the grading plans for all of the, the lots and the houses when they, because it's just a subdivision, but, yeah, it was, yeah. So I'd like, you know, if we be able to give the building commissioner something to work with even when it's beyond ours, like, so that, the trigger on the cut and fill was not just special permit, but, because some of these things, like on Central and on off of Pleasant, those wouldn't have been triggered by anything else.
Right.
Other than the cut and fill by law.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be great.
So it seems like us adopting that subdivision wasn't really a good thing for us to adopt, is it?
But we had not, no criteria by which not to approve it.
Yeah, because didn't we adopt the sub, as a town, didn't Sean Riern say whatever that, back in 2010 or whatever, the town adopted the subdivision control law?
Although...
Or something?
I think that would have been much longer ago.
Or what, yeah, but it seems like maybe adopting that wasn't such a great thing.
Well, I think that, you have to have a way to subdivide land.
Yeah.
And it gave requirements that when somebody would do that, yeah.
I just think that, you know, when you have such little land left, people taking the sites that are sort of the hardest to do something with and, and still doing something with them, and it means pretty, some pretty disruptive kinds of site work.
Okay. Well, thank you all, and if that is everything, we can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Bye.
Thank you all, good night.
Good night.